Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April 18th, 2020. We have three informational items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the Let's Talk Residential Engagement Program update. Item number two will be accessory dwelling units, ADU and ordinance update. And item number three is preferred concepts designed for the green on 38th Avenue. And we will start our meeting tonight, as we usually do, with an opportunity for the public to address the council on any of these three agenda items only. So I have one person signed up to speak, Todd Young. If you'd like to come to the podium and give us your name, your first name and your last name. If you'd spell your last name and give us an address. The clerk is going to start his timer when you're done with that, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Todd Young, T-O-D-D-Y-O-U-N-G. And my address is 6930 West 32nd Avenue. Wheat Ridge, Colorado.
Thank you.
Okay. I was hoping not to be the first one because I've never done this before. I've never been to a city council meeting before, so.
Just relax. You're doing a great job so far, so just relax and.
I don't know what to tell you about it, but we would like to have the ADU unit. We have, at this point, we've lived in Wheat Ridge for 30 years. We've raised our family in Wheat Ridge. We have an acre of land right now. We've been wanting to put up a unit for my in-laws to live in at this point. And then someday we would live in it, and my kid, one of our kids would live in our house. The big house. We'd like to detached ADU unit, which we've been trying to work with the city for a few years to get, be able to build a three, like a three-car garage with an ADU unit above it. Because it would walk out on the back to ground level where our yard slopes. And my in-laws have, my mother-in-law's had a heart attack, cancer and stroke. And my father-in-law has dementia. And they've been living from family to family to family, moving around between the three sisters right now. And we'd really like to be able to give them a spot that is actually designed for an ADU type of unit, where they've got a shower that is accessible for people. Because none of our houses were built for people. Meaning, right now, they're not in wheelchairs. They're both using walkers and canes. But we'd like to have a, be able to build a unit that is accessible as far as the kitchen, the bathroom, and everything for somebody who needs extra help with that. And we also have a business here in Wheat Ridge, so we are very connected to Wheat Ridge. We've lived here for over 30 years now. And this is our second house, and it's an acre of land. And we have plenty of land to build it, but the city said they would allow it as long as it was attached to our house, which would make it look like a big monstrosity, which we don't want to do. We'd like to move it back where we have a shed right now that has needed to be replaced for the 20 years that we've been there. But we've been waiting to try to build a complete unit out of it. So I guess that's all I have. Do you guys have questions?
Okay, we don't really take questions, but thank you very much. You're right on time. We're discussing that tonight, so thank you very much. I don't have anybody else signed up here. If you haven't signed up and are here in City Hall and would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Please come to the podium and give us your first name and your last name. If you'd please spell your last name and give us an address. You have left three minutes to address the council.
Bob Razzle, B-R-A-Z-E-L-L, 3830 Carr Street. Well, I sympathize you, you wanting an ADU, but maybe you, you people ought to think about doing a variance for this kind of situation, everything else. I had one council member here who's my councilperson. I read a little article that people ought to be able to buy ADUs because they got personal property rights. If you own your property, you ought to be able to do whatever you want to with it. Well, you know, when you buy a house, you know what the zoning is. And you should be able to read the zoning. And, you know, and so you've got personal property rights to do what you want within the zoning regulations. But when you're more important, because you want to violate the zoning regulations and have an Airbnb or an ADU or whatever you want to do, but your rights are more important than your 20 neighbors around you, than their rights, who also bought their property with the zoning that's on the property. So, you know, I don't quite understand where you people come from. That one person's rights are more important than all their neighbors. And now we've got existing ADUs, so instead of trying to get those to where they're brought into the laws of the city, no, we're just going to say, okay, anybody who wants to break the law, that's fine. We'll just change the law to accommodate you. You guys are way off base. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here hasn't signed up? Please come to the podium and give us your name and address and those things. Clerk will start the recorder when you're, actually the timer, it's not the recorder. We're recording now, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a city council who are here for my third three minutes.
Before you start, would you introduce yourself and tell us where you live?
I'm 3812 Taft Court in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
I looked at the upcoming statement that on April 5th, Intermountain Healthcare officially came to Wheat Ridge, officially came.
Now, Dr. Fleeger, this is not, this is, we need to stay on the items that are on the agenda, please.
I don't want to talk about homelessness. I feel homelessness is on your agenda.
Actually, it's not on our agenda tonight.
There's an important, that is being.
Well, we've got a Let's Talk Engagement Program coming up. We have accessory dwelling units and the preferred design concepts for 38th Avenue. So we don't have homelessness tonight.
Oh, okay, because I may have misread.
Okay, but we will, and on our next meeting, on next Monday night, our regular council meeting, we will have open discuss, you know, you can come and talk on any item that isn't on the agenda. So if you'd like to come back. We'd love to have you come back and talk about that. Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else here who hasn't signed up, but would like to speak under Public's Right to Speak? And you're able to do that online by raising your hand in the virtual format. And I'll ask our clerk if anyone has their hand raised. Okay, I don't see anyone here in the hall and no one online, so we will complete our citizen's right to speak. Thank you all for joining us tonight. And we will go to item number one. This is a Let's Talk Resident Engagement Program update. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several staff members here this evening. And I will turn it over to Ken Johnson, our Community Development Director. He'll introduce those staff members who are going to present this evening.
Thanks, Patrick. I'll be brief and just turn it over here to our fearless Let's Talk team of Jeff Hurt and Ashley Holland. The one thing I wanted to mention maybe just before we launch is I do still remember when we got council's approval and support for launching this program and adding staff to support it. Because I think, Leah, you might have been one of these people that made it clear to us that you didn't want to just do another several years of talking, right? That council wanted to be focused on actionable items in the meantime as well. So we've endeavored to bring back to council a number of different actionable items during the launching and ongoing development of this program. And several of those are highlighted in the memo that you have. And of course, the work program is really about that. It gets updated through each and every blitz and new neighborhood that we go through. And we've been pleased that we've had council support to really do that, to be able to keep listening, but also keep taking action. And a lot of that is really council action through adoption of various ordinance, consideration of ordinances, adoption of the budget with support for things like the NTMP. And we'll highlight a few of those things today. Additionally, one of the new nuances to the way we're implementing this program right now is that Jeff and Ashley know a lot of different things in addition to, you know, working with the public on this program. They're really good at engagement, in my estimation. And we're kind of morphing them into more of a hybrid role of continuing to manage the Let's Talk program and make their way through all the various neighborhoods, but also really be, being hands-on, the ground and implementing as well. So they're taking an active role in several of the CIP projects that are ebbing out of this program in the engagement aspects of that. So 38th Avenue, 32nd and Youngfield, the 35th Avenue White Pet Projects. So they'll be a face for some of those projects, which we really like kind of the closure that brings from a public perspective, that they've been able to talk and express their desires and needs through the Let's Talk program. And then they see, you know, Jeff or Ashley, or Jeff and Ashley as part of that implementation team as well. So we think that's a nice way to bring closure to a person's participation in the Let's Talk program, to see it, to see something actually come to fruition. So with that, I'll turn it over to, I think Jeff's going to kick it off. And I might give you this, so you can answer questions.
I think they call that the hot seat. Thanks, Ken. I know you have a full agenda tonight, so we'll keep it relatively brief, but this is just a general.
Jeff, I'll remind you to talk, talking right into the mic.
Right into the mic.
Yeah, we're not picking it up.
Okay, yep, sorry. So this is just a general program update following our last engagement blitz in our last two neighborhoods. And so the, sort of the purpose here is to call your attention to the blitz reports that we do at the end of each neighborhood. They give you a good snapshot of kind of where these neighborhoods are at on particular issues. And then, like Ken said, just to give you a high-level update on the program work plan, some new information. We were last before you in October on this program. And so new information since then that we'll highlight here for you briefly. Certainly more detail in your packet. So as a reminder, the program breaks the city down into 10 neighborhoods. And we've covered a little over half the city now and all. There's another map that'll show kind of where we're at with this program overall. It launched in October 2020. And just a reminder before we do that of kind of the structure of an engagement blitz. So we do two neighborhoods at a time. Each neighborhood sees one of these blitzes, as we call it, where essentially we come to them with very open-ended questions without any preconceived ideas of what the issues are. We ask them what they love about the neighborhood, what they would want to change, what the city can do to support kind of what's most important to them. And then we curate a list of potential actions the city might be able to take that directly responds to that feedback in a pretty scientific way. And then, of course, we report it to council, and that informs our work plan at the end of each blitz. And so this map is the overall kind of status of things with the program. So we've covered now six of 10 neighborhoods. East Wheat Ridge and Bel Air were our first neighborhoods in October 2020. And Lepplamanner and Applewood soon followed. And then we just finished Fruitdale and Anderson Park. And so that's what's before you tonight, is kind of the outcomes of that. And I'll turn it over to Ashley in terms of sharing how we breach people, these neighborhoods, and some of the sort of unique challenges and how we respond.
So we've used a lot of our tried and true outreach efforts. And, but we've also tweaked them based on who we know lives in these neighborhoods and how we can best engage the public. So I also want to point out that we used a combination of in-person and virtual methods to best accommodate our residents' schedules, abilities, their resources, and also their preferences for how they want to engage. So you may see, these are the percentages of each neighborhood's population that participated in Let's Talk. And you might notice that we saw slightly lower percentages of engagement for this past blitz. And we have some theories on that. One of which is that this area has the highest renter occupied. It's about 70% as compared to the citywide average, about 50%. And because we know we have more renters in this neighborhood, we really did adapt and expand our engagement to best accommodate them engaging with us. So we held a park pop-up right outside of the Kipling Village Apartments. We placed our yard signs and flyers at the multi-unit complexes around, and also some nearby, some bus stops. And we also clarified our messaging. That's for both of our mailers and our social media to call out to owners and renters and make sure everyone feels welcome in the process. And our engagement in Let's Talk dovetails really nicely with the 44th Avenue Subarea Plan. So because this area was a bit harder to reach, we've built the groundwork of engagement in this area. And then our colleagues are able to build upon that and keep these residents engaged through the subarea planning process.
Perfect. That's the feedback. So our purpose tonight isn't to go through all the things we asked and all the details. We're just going to highlight a few things and also to call your attention again to these blitz reports. They're really long, so, but they are structured to be very, I think, user-friendly and sort of graphics-rich to where you don't have to go through all 100-plus pages. You can kind of flip to a couple key pages to get a sort of a snapshot of where these neighborhoods are at on these issues. So each neighborhood gets one, and then six of them. And I'll call attention to these tables that are in and around, I think, page 10 in the blitz reports, which is like, if you don't want to read all 100-plus pages, which most of us don't, you can, if you just look at these tables, it gives you sort of the numbers of times that people mentioned particular things and open-ended comments, and then also how particular action items ranked in terms of resident preferences. So very much structured to, if you want to do a deep dive, but also if you want to just flip and kind of see where each neighborhood is at. So I'll highlight for each neighborhood, sort of the top three things that came out of each neighborhood in terms of action items. So for Anderson Park, the top three, this is why this program is really interesting. Each neighborhood is really, is very different in how they sort of prioritize things. Number one, actually, was to look at floodplain improvements to the area north of 44th Avenue. Not surprising, because obviously there's costs with flood insurance. It's in people's pockets, but also property maintenance is a big barrier there. If you want to do any renovations to your house, in a lot of cases, it triggers upgrades that are very, very expensive to come up to standard. So that one didn't surprise us, and it's something we have been kind of talking about for a while. But we got really kind of focused input on that one. The second thing that's kind of unique to this neighborhood is to look at proactive code enforcement, which is something our code enforcement folks have done in the past, and I think it's been several years. But, or essentially, you have a boundary of a neighborhood that has a particular problem with property maintenance. And there's more of a proactive, kind of gentler approach to addressing some of these concerns, offering free resources to fix some of the issues, things like that. This isn't saying we're doing these things. This is saying the neighborhood is generally supportive of doing this type of thing. I'm happy to talk about any of these. All of these get kind of vetted through the different departments and have lots of detail behind them. The third thing in Anderson Park was to implement targeted improvements to 44th Avenue. And so this one is a little bit nuanced in that, obviously, we're doing a subarea plan right now, which is sort of the long-term vision, the long-term, you know, land use and transportation vision, the 20-year-ish vision. This was more about targeted, short-term improvements, like physical improvements, like planter boxes, things of that nature to kind of spruce up the corridor. Next, Fruitdale, I'll highlight the top three things. So the top ranking things in Fruitdale were more resources for the NTMP, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. That's basically indicative of the fact that speeding on residential streets is one of the biggest concerns, in particular in Fruitdale. Second was the targeted 44th improvement, similar to Anderson Park. And then third, the proactive code enforcement. So the neighborhoods were kind of aligned, but a little bit different on some of these topics. And I'll highlight, I know this isn't legible, but I'll just highlight in the packet, you've got the ongoing program work plan, which is essentially all the things that we've asked, all the action items we've asked of neighborhoods, and kind of the status of each of these. So it's growing in a pretty big list, and it's well-aligned certainly with the council's strategic priorities. And we certainly do that deliberately. What's interesting about these reports is you can start to get a snapshot of each of these issues and look at how each neighborhood kind of views it differently, levels of support. So it's a kind of user-friendly document to get a sense of, you know, how Applewood feels about bulk plane versus East Wheat Ridge, for example. Those nuances are captured in this, how this work plan is laid out. I'll highlight just a few things, and I'll wrap up. In terms of new information in the work plan that sort of, not necessarily came out of this program, but sort of bolstered by this program, and in some cases came out of this program, we are doing, based on feedback from previous neighborhoods, we're starting community engagement on road improvement projects, 35th Avenue and East Wheat Ridge, as Ken said, Youngfield. Once we get direction on West 38th Avenue, that will be hopefully launching this year. And so there was also funding approved for this year's budget through a variety of sources, city council's budget, but also Jefferson County Open Space Grants, for example, for some improvements, including improvements to the Oda Street Trailhead in Lepplamanner, which I didn't know existed until we took a deep dive into that neighborhood and saw the conditions there and agreed with the neighborhood, certainly, that it needs some help. So there's funding for that. NTMP, you got increased funding, more funding for the dumpster days, which is already being kind of put into action. So we're really excited how we've been able to use this program to take action on all of these things. Couple more things to highlight. Housing in general, as everyone knows, a key issue, affordable housing. We have heard that in each of the neighborhoods, and we've asked it in a variety of ways. And sort of the data is there that it is a hot-button issue. So we're doing a couple things in that front. Obviously, you have ADUs right after this, that's in that bucket. But also, we, as you know, got grant funding for an affordable housing strategy. That's launching now, and we're coming to you on May 2nd to talk about that one. And then last, I'll highlight regarding the improved communications. So this is the idea that we've been hearing from neighborhoods, just tell us what's going on. We want to know what's going on. Give us a user-friendly, understandable way to see these development projects, these city projects. And so we are developing a public-facing map interface that we're excited about. And we have someone on board to, we started working on that. That will hopefully launch later this year. And the code amendment that was passed last October-ish now requires us to notice owners and tenants, owners and renters for development applications. So that one passed and that moved forward as well. So a lot going on. Last couple slides here, just next steps-wise, same map as I showed earlier. Our next neighborhoods are a bit to be determined now, but our thinking is that it would likely be Paramount Park and Southeast Wheat Ridge. Happy to talk about that rationale, but that probably won't incur until later this summer. I'd say at the earliest, so we can field a resource, all these other engagement efforts we have going on. So that, I think, is all we had. Again, just a general update, but happy to answer any questions or field any comments, questions to kind of help us improve the program as we're always trying to do.
All right, Jeff, thank you very much. We'll go to questions, and Councilmember Hoppy, and then Councilmember Holteem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for all of your information and bringing this into, into a space where we can like really read it and digest it. I am sure that the council representatives for these two neighborhoods are super excited to get this information, as excited as I was when we did the first one with East Wheat Ridge. One question I had is on the, you know, what we constantly hear is we just want to know what's happening. And we have the What's Up Wheat Ridge. Do we have any feedback on if What's Up Wheat Ridge is, is something that our residents are engaged in? Is it something they don't know about? You know, like, do you have any feedback on that?
Yeah, so specifically for Let's Talk, it's been an amazing platform. We've had great reception. We, we start with mailers, physical mailers, to owners and renters in the area. And that drives them to What's Up Wheat Ridge and allows them to register for the project and continue to get information. It really helps with closing the loop after the fact. So we'll soon go to the East Wheat Ridge folks and let them know that West 35th Avenue engagement is starting soon, and then they'll be able to engage, engage in that. So, and, and we've had a lot of different projects that are outside of Let's Talk. I know that the Green on 38th has had some great success. Lutheran Master Plan had some great success on there. And we've built a great database of engaged residents who are very excited to talk about a whole host of issues. So it's been a really, really great tool for that.
Numbers on that, too, if you're ever curious. It's very, you get a lot of behind-the-scenes metrics. And I don't know what our numbers are now, but they're well over 2,000. It's fun to watch it grow, and you see the spikes when you do it, the social media blast, you see a spike. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't making now another space for, for people to go get information from. If we can make sure that we kind of pool our, our spaces into a smaller amount at the city website, maybe What's Up Wheat Ridge, it just, it'll start to get confusing if there's too many spaces to go to.
Yeah, and we've definitely discussed the idea that all of these need to be connected in really thoughtful ways, so that if you're on What's Up Wheat Ridge, you're very, you can easily access the city website, the map tool, what have you.
Thank you, Councilor Holteem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys. It's always fun to get these updates. I'm gonna, as you were introducing it, I think we need to rename it Let's Do, because it's not talking, it's a lot of doing. It was really fun to go through the matrix of input and how that's, you know, sometimes uniform across different communities, but also being able to identify what's unique within the neighborhood districts. And, and I think, you know, having worked with Councilmember Stites then as residents on the NRS, I think this really fulfills what we were hearing from our community at the time. So I just want to recognize, you know, the good work that has, has come out of that. Because, you know, it was, it was a new approach, and I think the city's doing a really great job with it. So a bunch of kudos there. The question I have is, so, so I live in the first neighborhood that was part of this, Bel Air. And I think East Wheat Ridge was the other community that was done with that. And when we were participating in that, so I'm kind of wearing both my resident and my council, the, the process was really, you know, I asked specifically, and we were kind of told, it was, it was informing higher-level priorities for the city and less around what was like point-specific, things that we wanted to see, like in, in Bel Air or in East Wheat Ridge. And can you just kind of talk a little bit about how like this program has evolved from that, that first round? Because I think it's, where it is now is really, I think, what, what NRS was wanting it to be, which is like, how are we informing at our relatable neighborhood district level? What are the improvements that are meaningful here around like specific streets or specific parks? Or, but also like the higher-level things. And I'm just also sort of curious how that, I know you don't want to talk about when we take a breather after they're all done and come back and start over again. But I'm just sort of curious, because like in Bel Air, we never really like had that conversation about like unique to Bel Air, what are specific streets or specific corners or specific quarters? So just, if you could speak to the evolution and then maybe like how that kind of cycles through the next time you go through it.
Yeah, I think, and that's a great observation, that it, it has evolved. And I think we had an open mind about what this could be when we started. And I think, to your point specifically, I think we realized in the first couple neighborhoods when we were talking to residents that there is a desire for this long-term thinking, right? Of like, what, you know, what's this high-level vision kind of stuff? And that as a place, I think that we definitely heard loud and clear. It was like, I kind of want things to happen sooner than later, because our neighborhood is changing really fast. And if we wait five, 10 years for this to get programmed, it may be too late. So I think we shifted, well, we let the residents kind of tell us, like, you know. So I think our mindset sort of shifted, and we started to, as we were sort of, you know, curating these specific, neighborhood-specific things, like, should we look at 35th Avenue in East Wheat Ridge, for example? We started to do it in a way that was much more neighborhood-specific, whereas in the beginning, it was like, let's see how the whole city feels about bulk plane at a neighborhood level. And so I think it's, it's evolved to where it's a combination of the two. But I think in terms of a sort of. in terms of a sort of building support for it, I think, me as a resident personally, I would like to see that, yes, this is something I could weigh in on now, and it could be done in like a year or two kind of thing, versus, let's wait and see with the other nine neighborhoods, and maybe the city will do something in a few years kind of thing. So, I don't know. I should give you any add?
Yeah, just that, you know, we're trying to strike that balance between, as Jeff said, you know, like the long term and some of the short term, and it, really trying to let the residents drive what that looks like. And so, you know, for instance, if a lot of residents come around one specific item, like the Oda Street Trailhead, that is something that we know that we can tackle on the short term, whereas in Bel Air, we, we heard about lots of individual streets, but it, you know, it was more a handful here and a couple there. And so it, it also is driven by what the residents kind of rally behind as an individual site, if we can do something individual-site specific.
Great. Well, I just want to like give you guys a lot of credit for evolving the program and listening and modifying it. I think that that's one of the things that I really appreciate about our staff, is that they, you know, are looking at like, how can this do better? And I just can't imagine this program doing better than it's doing, so just thank you. And I will just tell you, I often go to What's Up Wheat Ridge to find out what's going on when I'm getting ready for like our, our district meetings. I find it, for me, it's the clearest and most coherent place to find information about our city. So I think we're doing a really great job in the communication, follow-through, and implementation, so kudos to everybody.
Councilor Noslerbeck?
And this is kind of a follow-up to Councilor Hoppe's comments, but I think something that both Councilor Dozeman and I have noticed when we're doing community meetings, in our dis, and all of this was in our district, so we, it's not even, it's not a challenge, it's just that we have to get creative when it comes to meeting with our residents. Just posting that we're meeting at a town hall meeting or something, we don't get as much participation. And I think what you all found in, with some of those ways of reaching residents, I think that, I went to a sub-area plant, the 44th Ave, but that meeting, being at the, being at the rec center and meeting people and not making it the only event that they were going to, is so helpful for families and busy residents who are just trying to get through their day to participate and be a part of the conversation. And so, great job on that, and I really liked what you all did with the signage and posting in, you know, some of our, you know, housing apartment complexes and things. That's all information that, as city councilors, I know you're giving us that information right now, but really memorializing that, and I think that's what you're getting to, is it's making sure websites are talking to each other, but also how do we make sure that, as councilors, next time we're, we're having a, I almost said throw in an event, we're not having a party, a town hall meeting or something? Or we're, we're meeting to engage with residents, that we're utilizing some of those resources? And so in that, I guess, this is me just kind of making sure, let's all draw those connections, but can we reach out to you all and be like, hey, we're doing a meeting, what did you do? And also, will you come?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We would, we can definitely share what we've done. Appendix A in the report has some of the, the more high-level, you know, as, you know, this is how often we post to social media, and, and this is some of the tactics we use, but the nitty-gritty of where did we put a yard sign, and who did we talk to at the multi-unit, you know, apartment complex to make sure our flyer was in the laundry room? We can, we can talk about those details as well.
Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ashley, for kind of giving us your feedback and, and your courage and your confidence in talking to our neighborhoods. And I really was not all that surprised by, by some of the primary concerns and the improvements that I know, at least in Anderson Park, having lived there, what our residents wanted to see. I was a little surprised by some of the potential action items, however, I'm really glad to see that we are actually going to be addressing those. So with the flood impacts, as well as the 44th Avenue improvements, from at least Kipling to Young Field for now, and I really appreciated the way you put this in a digestible, accessible document. You know, it was really easy to skim, you know, the first night that we, that we get it, and then you can delve a lot deeper, and you go into great depth and explanations. And I did have a question as far as like, how did you determine like the potential action items to address some of the concerns that, the primary concerns that residents voted for?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a really good question. So the, we don't have too scientific of a process, other than, once we combine all the feedback from the round one input, and we do all the quantitative stuff, and so we have the numbers to say these are the top concerns, we essentially have a multitude of brainstorming sessions interdepartmentally, so we'll have topically focused conversations with the police department, and the folks that work on, and the engineers, and we look at this whole host of issues, and, and having this neighborhood geography is really helpful, because it helps focus the thinking of like, what in this neighborhood could we do that responds to what people have said? So we obviously don't want to put things out there that are unrealistic, and so all the things that are in there are vetted through at least two or three rounds of conversations where we can iterate on it. And we obviously don't capture everything that, you know, could, could be done, but there's, and there's always a sweet spot of like, you know, do we as staff, is this something we've already been thinking about? And we knew, and we were like, oh, this is a good idea, we should do this, and/or is it something that's on the books as an adopted policy supporting we should do this? And are the residents saying that this is important to them? There's usually an alignment that happens, and, and, you know, so a lot of this stuff comes out of those conversations, but, but it's, it's a fascinating exercise to kind of go through and figure out what's possible, what's not possible. So, we always try to circle back to the residents, once things are finalized, and let them know. So, yeah.
And thank you, Jeff, sorry. I also wanted to ask, do you think that just like the second round of, of feedback is enough? Or would you have wanted to delve deeper and ask the residents more questions or follow-up questions, I guess?
Well, you know, that is what we're doing with some of these individual projects moving forward. So, you know, we're going back to East Wheat Ridge for West 35th Avenue, and we got a general idea, I believe around 75% of the people who participated in round two in East Wheat Ridge said that, yes, I support or strongly support making improvements to West 35th Avenue, but that doesn't give us all the information that we need. And so we are going back to them in this upcoming process, and with a much more detailed survey of, you know, what about this treatment? How about this? Do you, you know, what do you want to prioritize? Is it safety? Is it aesthetic? You know, there, we have a much more robust conversation on a really specific topic, which is, is likely something that we can do with several items. And then some things are, you know, more self-explanatory. Do we, you know, do you all expand bulk playing rules or do you not? And so we might not need to go back and have really detailed conversations, it's really topic-dependent.
Do you feel that the demographics are rapidly changing and will render this, some of this data, you know, not useful in the near future, or that you'll need to expand it on in the near future?
I don't, I don't think, the only place that I see it changing so rapidly, which is why I think we're waiting part is the north of I-70 area, like around the border transit area, because so many people are moving in. But, I don't know, I mean, it's tough for us to say we're not demographers, but you can look at median age and things like that, but, I mean, certainly closer to Denver, you see more demand for redevelopment and real redevelopment, and maybe folks from the Highlands migrating over or not, but, I don't know, from our perspective, I think that the opinions we're getting are sound for a while.
Do you, sorry, just one more. Do you see us needing to, to like, complete this process again or on an ongoing basis in some form or another? Like, I mean, do you think our resident survey that we have every two years is going to be enough to capture what we would need to continue these efforts?
Yeah, and Ken, Ashley may want to expand on this, but I, I don't know, I don't think we know yet. I think that we're gonna, one of the things about those programs, we, we kind of, you know, neighborhoods change, things are changing quickly, were unanticipated, so I think we're open to, you know, as we go into the last blitz, which will be into next year, into 2023, we'll want, I think, want to have a conversation with council, kind of share our thoughts for the next iteration of this program, whether or not that's restarting in a neighborhood that has a particular need, or there's change happening or something, or does it, do we want it to look a little bit different, that, you know, is responsive to kind of what people want? So I think the short answer is, I don't think we know yet, but we're going to evolve it, how it was best at the time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, one thing that I, I appreciate the way that we're going through this process is through these neighborhoods, they're not necessarily district-specific, because like, part of my district will be, again, coming up, but it, it brings up something that, that I'd like to ask the city manager about, which we can parking lot this, but, you know, we have many more residents coming, you know, into some of these districts, and some of them staying kind of stagnant in number of populations, so when do we, when do we redraw those district lines and do that process?
That's dictated by our charter or our code, and the city attorney's office is working with our city clerk. I believe it's May of 2023, if I remember, is when our deadline is to, for the clerk to, to look at, look into that. So they have, the clerk put money in this year's budget to, to hire resources to help with that process.
Mr. Goff is correct, and in fact, what we're waiting for right now is for the U.S. Census Bureau to give the county adequate individual precinct data so that they can draw all the district lines. The difficulty, of course, is just redrawing congressional district lines, state house district lines, et cetera, et cetera. So we're sort of in a hulking pattern, waiting to get the numbers we have to get, and then we'll take a thorough look.
And just a quick follow-up question on that. From what I remember, it's something that is, is supposed to be reviewed on a somewhat regular basis? Is that true? And when, when was that really done last?
Michael Snow did the last one of those, I believe it was 2010 or 2011.
And how often is it supposed to?
After every decennial census.
Just after, just after every census? It's not more often than that?
If we had some major change in population distribution, or we suddenly had, you know, 15,000 more people living here, then we'd have to look at that in between the census.
Got it.
But there hasn't been a sufficient change to trigger that up to now.
I think, Mr. Dozeman, I think the code does actually state, there's a repetitive schedule every four years after an election, or the original election in 1979 or something, you kind of have to count. He's looking it up, we can come back to that if you'd like to.
Thank you.
I had a question before we let you all go with her. Thanks. Have you, have you had much success engaging the commercial businesses along in the, in the neighborhoods and, I guess, other institutions, whatever, you know, churches or whatever? But mainly business, I'm kind of curious if, if the business community has been able to engage in this Let's Talk?
So we've specifically focused on residents, because our businesses, we engage them on, you know, some of the corridor planning and, and things of that nature, and we really wanted this to be focused on residents. But we have engaged a lot of the institutions in these neighborhoods to help us spread the word, so we've talked to all of the schools who have very kindly put our yard signs and, and tried to get their families to, to take part in the process. We've reached out to churches who have put information in their newsletters, but, but our main focus is to get the residents to engage, and then to, you know, work with our businesses to, you know, point them to the right area to, to talk about anything else that they want to discuss.
Great, thank you. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. So is the, do you typically send out the postcards first, and then you maybe follow up with some type of email blast, or does it vary?
Yes, we start with the postcards, because that really drives people to What's Up Wheat Ridge. The postcards and the yard signs, I should say, because the yard signs have both the website on it and a QR code. The postcards not only have a QR code in the website, but they also mention that if individuals don't have access to that kind of technology, that they could call or visit us. So I've taken many surveys over the phone for folks, and so we start with that, and that helps us build that email database, and then we're able to communicate with them ongoing throughout. But we also do another round of postcards as well, so that during, when we start round two of engagement, those individuals who didn't engage online still know that we're, we want to talk to them, and then they're asked to, to call us, and, and then we can engage with them as well.
And how did you, I'm just curious, like, have you ever considered doing some emails first, pausing, and then sending out postcards, just to have an understanding of, like, how does that change the metrics? Would it, because it's, at three, I'm, I'm disappointed with the, with the citizens that we're only getting a 3% to 8% response, and you guys are going the extra mile of, you know, talking even to the apartments and everybody, but I'm just curious if you've looked at, I mean, I know it's kind of a shotgun effect, but trying to figure out like, what, what is the best way to try to get data, and I have no idea as far as the chicken or the egg, but it, it's a tough nut to crack.
It is, it is, yeah. We, I mean, we continue to evolve how we reach people. We, we start with the postcard because What's Up Wheat Ridge is a fairly new tool, so we always, you know, we'll start, we'll send an email to anyone who's registered on What's Up Wheat Ridge for any number of projects, but they, if they haven't got, gotten to What's Up Wheat Ridge yet, it may be because they haven't gotten that physical reminder, but we're also, you know, mayor's matters, we have content in that email newsletter, and our connections, physical paper, so we're, we're trying to make sure we reach people physically in the mail, over email, social media, our local newspapers, any way we can.
Because what I often hear from constituents is, we didn't hear about it, why didn't you send us a postcard? And that's exactly what you guys are doing at least once, maybe twice, and you're still only getting 3% to 8%.
Yeah, each neighborhood now receives four postcards throughout the process, two before, well, at the very beginning of round one, about partway through round one, at the very beginning of round two, and a little bit on the way through round two.
Actually, I think, you know, 38% may seem low, but that's actually a pretty good turnout for, for citizen engagement. So I, you know, I don't know if we can expect much more. It's, you know, I don't, you could go knock on every door and you're still not going to get more to come, it's just people are busy, people aren't interested. 38% is, is kind of what you see across the country, really.
Yeah, we reached out, we reached out to some, sorry, to some sort of national engagement organizations, see if there was a good metric, and we, they picked up, as they said, so, but for context, the 2019 neighborhood evaluation strategy, big citywide effort on a citywide scale, had about, over about a year, had about 1,000, we covered a little bit more than half of the city, about 1,000, so, a little bit better, but.
Thank you for all your hard work.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you both for, for coming, and a great report and great work in the community, and we look forward to you continuing on to, to survey more neighborhoods, and, and come back and see us again. All right, thanks so much. Okay, we will move to item number two on our agenda. This is a discussion on accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just as a reminder again, please speak directly into your mics, we're, we're getting some feedback from constituents on Zoom, and they can't hear unless you're speaking right into your mic. So I will turn it over to Mr. Johnstone again to introduce this item. So I will turn it over to Mr. Johnstone again to introduce this item.
Do my best, I hope. What's that? The, I'll be really brief, because council is very familiar with this topic, having study session with it multiple times, most recently in November of last year. So Scott Cutler, as I think you all know, is our subject matter expert and has done a lot of really good research and good work crafting recommendations, and we got a lot of really specific feedback from council in November, which was super helpful. But as we delved into the topics more, of course, a few additional questions came up. So as we target drafting an ordinance here over the next several months to actually get in front of the planning commission and council for action through the public hearing process, we have a series of questions that we want to work through tonight and hopefully get some concrete direction from council and then be able to work on that ordinance drafting process. So I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thanks, Ken. No presentation from me, really, just quickly go over the memo. So as you all know, you gave us direction in November to proceed, I guess, drafting an ordinance and to come back at a later date for the study session, and we're here now. So the memo is really broken into two parts. The first part, in the proposed regulations section, is really outlining the consensus that you all gave us the last time we were here, and so I've summarized that, as well as kind of letting you all know what sections might need to be included in the ordinance. And then the second half, which is really the bulk of the discussion tonight, hopefully, are seven different discussion topics based on some of the questions that came up in last meetings, and we brought back some recommendations for you, as well as a few more discussion topics that kind of came up as we were researching other cities and best practices and just kind of things that we would have to address in our code in order to make an ordinance function. So I don't know, I'm assuming you all will have a lot of questions, if we want to go over the first half again, or just jump right into those discussion topics. Thanks.
Do we have a discussion on the, sort of the introduction, or do you want to kind of, maybe we ought to just sort of pop into the questions, because they seem to be pretty focused and...
Thanks. Well, I guess we can go one by one. You already raised your hand, Councilmember Holtein, so I don't know.
I was just supporting jumping in, jumping.
So the first discussion topic was about the location permitted, and this actually came up in the discussion of the ordinance amongst staff. So as a reminder, council's consensus was to allow ADUs in all residential and agricultural zones and in MUN, and then also in new PRDs, which are our planned residential districts. And we've actually identified a class of properties that are single-unit homes but in commercial zone districts, and there's about 50 of those citywide. There's a bunch of homes in C1, in CMUC, and these are all, at least most of them are legal residential uses based on when they were built. So I provided an attachment in the report that shows how they're dispersed, and they tend to be concentrated on 44th and Harland, but they're all around the city. So the question really is, if we follow that consensus, there are that class of properties that would not be allowed to have an ADU along with that legal single-unit use? If we go that route? If we go the other route and just allow ADUs as an accessory use to all single-unit homes, that would include every single-unit home in the city, not just those in residential, agriculture, or MUN districts? There are probably some drawbacks in that, those properties are zoned for commercial uses, and so adding an ADU might increase their value and not allow them to actually ever develop into commercial. So those were kind of the questions. But really, our question is, do you want to go with the consensus from the previous meeting, or would you rather allow accessory, ADUs as an accessory use to all single-unit homes?
Counselor Hoppe, and then Counselor Holtein.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Scott, I have a quick question, though. When I was reading through all of this, and it says, "single-family uses" and, you know, "single-family homes," one thing I wanted to be, make sure that we're very clear of in our ordinance, is that we're talking about detached, single-family homes. So if there is a duplex on a property, I, like, I'm almost positive that we discussed this, if there's a duplex on the property, we weren't talking about being able to have an ADU on part, in the duplex, you know, increasing the density. So it says, "single-family uses" a lot in here, but I just wanted to make sure that the intent was detached, single-family homes.
Yes, and that is correct. So for the discussion topic one, those are all detached, single-unit homes, and same, so there's 50 of those citywide. And then same with the location permitted, we had a discussion about potentially allowing ADUs with duplexes, but that just, that's a different conversation, I think. So, yeah, the focus of this ordinance would be for the single-unit home.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. Are there other options here? I recognize we're kind of trying to find the balance between, you know, this whole ordinance is kind of being crafted around a bunch of outlier existing conditions in our city. Is there a possibility, instead of doing the, permitting it for all single-unit homes, could we make the commercial, could we make that a conditional use or a special use for those 50 properties? Is, I just, do we get in a situation where we're, like, encouraging more conversion from what might look like a house but is being used for commercial that could later be an ADU? It just, it feels like it's kind of a gray zone. And if we want to see our commercial districts as commercial, could we create it as like a special use or a, is there an in-between thing?
I would say a special use is a pretty intensive process that requires a neighborhood meeting, it could potentially go to city council, so that is probably a bit overkill. But I do think, I don't know, we wanted to leave it up to you all. I think a lot of cities regulate by use, not by zone district. So that was where I was going with this. But if there's concerns about these houses perpetually staying as residential, then I think the zone district option is probably the more appropriate choice. So I don't know if that was an answer to your question, but that's the reason by, why we.
It was helpful, yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I've noticed that there's a, it's a small trend, but of those 50 houses that you talked about, that they are opting to go to a mixed-use neighborhood zoning, because to go towards a residential, and that seems to be kind of the intent. So if they, to kind of comment on what Counselor Holtein had said, if they, you know, which route would somebody go if they're already a commercial use, but really, it looks like a single-family house, and they want to have an ADU, but it's actually zoned commercial, you know, what's, it looks like they could almost go either path, right? Where they could say, let's opt for a rezoned, mixed-use neighborhood, and then, and then I want to have some commercial, and I also want, could you also have a little bit of residential in that same house versus it's commercial zone, but they just want to have an ADU with a little bit of residential? Are both of those scenarios possible?
I think they would be, and we have, staff has recommended approval of several mixed-use neighborhood rezonings from C1 or NC, other commercial zone districts, but those do tend to be more in our corridors, so Harland, 44th, 38th. There are some C1 properties that are more embedded in neighborhoods, surprisingly, and probably are not really viable as commercial properties, but that's what their zoning is. So again, like, MUN is a good idea in some cases, but probably wouldn't impact all of them.
Thank you.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So are these commercial, like, homes being used in, as residential, or are they primarily being used as commercial uses?
These 50 are single-unit homes being used as residential.
Okay, and so, because there are a lot of properties in that area that look like residential homes but are operating as businesses.
Right.
Okay, so these 50 that you've identified are actually being used for residential?
Correct, yeah. We know of a lot of properties that have gotten converted from residential to commercial, and these have historically been residential.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott, in this, in this situation, if we zoned by, not by zoning, but then by use, so these particular properties could potentially, it could open up a, maybe a live-work type situation, where if they had an ADU, they could live in their ADU and then turn their other property into a commercial property and, or they could then rent it as a commercial property and be able to live in the ADU, so that there could be some live-work situations on the same property?
I think that's a possibility. Our code already does allow some residential uses in commercial zones, so, for example, someone could have a small apartment behind a storefront, that's already allowed. But there are pretty strong parameters behind that, so, yeah, I don't really know how to answer that question fully.
Okay. I think that, in my opinion, I'm able to support, to use it as an accessory use to all single-unit homes, and I, because I don't know that we're really concerned that these commercial properties may potentially stay residential at this point. If they're so embedded, they may not even need to go to commercial at this point.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. I agree, I support this for all single-unit homes, in part because 44th has a bunch of really quirky properties. There are some long, deep properties that, you know, ultimately, I think are great opportunities to kind of, to leverage, and, you know, they're on corridors, so, you know, one of my positions has been I definitely support, you know, increasing, you know, residential density on corridors, because it's access to transit and it can handle that. So I definitely support going ahead and doing, allowing ADUs as an accessory use to all single-unit homes.
Counselor Dozeman.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask for clarification on the statement that you just made in regards to, like, these commercial properties already allow for apartments or some form of residential use?
So, very, very limited. So MUN does, that allows for townhomes, apartments, things like that. C1, NC, RC all allow a very, very limited residential use. So, for example, basically, one unit per property has to be less in square footage than the commercial, it's got to be behind it or above it, so it can't be like a primary, the primary use of the property couldn't be residential. So C1 essentially forces a property to be a commercial property first and foremost.
But in my mind, that's kind of allowing for an ADU in a commercial property as-is, without already, like, without just going ahead and allowing all single-unit homes? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, so our code does allow it, but the primary use of the property has to be commercial, and this class of properties, the 50 single-unit homes, the primary use is residential. So that code section doesn't apply.
I see, okay, thank you for that.
Are these then more non-conforming uses?
Some of them may be non-conforming, but the majority of them are actually legal residential uses. Our code, do you know the year? It's some year set a time where it's basically any use that was residential before that year is legal on this property.
So it's a, it's a non-conforming legal use?
It, they're legal uses in this case. Legislatively, we made those all legal uses, as opposed to legally non-conforming.
Okay. And if we, what would be the impact on the commercial uses sort of going forward, were we to allow our ADUs in the commercial properties? Would we tend to move those properties more into a residential character, or would we, would they revert back into more of a commercial use?
So, I don't think we've fully kind of vetted this question, I mean, I think that was what Ms. Hoppe kind of was asking too. And my thought would be, you know, once, if you come in and knock on our door and say, hey, I've got a established, single-unit, so I'm therefore, if this is the direction council goes, I'm eligible for an accessory unit. I think once you make that decision and you rely upon the presence of a single-unit home there as the basis for making that application, you've locked in that residential use, absent some other code amendment. Because they'd be coming into us and say, here's what I've got, I've got a single-family, single-unit home and an accessory unit, but I'd like to convert the commercial built, or the single-family, single-unit home back to a commercial use, and I don't think we could do that. I mean, that's my take. I mean, unless you figure out a way legislative in this ordinance to contemplate that.
Then it wouldn't be an accessory use, right?
Well, but then I think it is possible that that code section, where we already allow essentially an accessory dwelling unit for a commercial building, could potentially apply. But, yeah, I will say, so we don't allow a new, single-unit home to be built in C1, these are all just existing, and the number probably has gone down over time. But, yeah, I think it would make things a little bit complicated for these, this class of properties, like Ken said.
Counselor Dozeman.
Yeah, I would agree, and I think because there is so much gray area in this, I would prefer to remain, it be per residential zoning as opposed to allow for a primary residential use, particularly if we're looking at developing these commercial corridors to be used for that purpose. I understand, you know, increasing residential uses along corridors as well, but I don't think that only one unit, I prefer them to go to MUN than stay as-is and have ADUs.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my concern is, for 50 properties, I don't want to guide our policy, because we're worried about the 50 properties that, you know, that might be in the gray area. And so when I was looking at it as an overall big picture, I felt like the, as an accessory use to all single units was the better way to address it, rather than through the zoning. So that's, that's why I was looking at it that way. Because, you know, with the zoning, we did, we did call out all the types of zoning, but, but the, you know, but if we, if we, you know, I don't want us to end up in a place where it's like, oh, but what about this zone later on down the road, right? So if we're saying, we think accessory dwelling units are okay, if you have a single-family detached, single-family home, then an accessory dwelling unit is okay, then I think that that should be okay, regardless of what the zone, what we're doing in zoning. So that, that's why I was saying to go that way.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. So it seems like we've kind of opened up a can of worms here with, you know, we came across something that is impacted by this, but is also sort of like touching on other things that we're talking about as a council. So I just looked at our long-term, our future agenda items, and we have two items that are coming up to kind of touch on this particular. One is, commercial corridor code review is on here, and then we also have the economic development strategy and update. And I feel like the things we're talking about are going to be really impacted for these 50 properties, but how we're thinking about our corridors. So I suggest that maybe some of the nuances of like, the impacts of how these 50 will impact our corridors, or maybe we put a placeholder on this topic and make sure we're bringing it up when we're talking about what we want for economic development on our quarters and how we want code to be impacted there, because I agree, I mean, I think we've got 50 properties that I think surprised all of us a little bit here tonight. But I think we're kind of talking about how do we want zoning and land use and improvement on our corridors to impact like the future economics of our quarters, and I feel like I don't have enough information right now to really make that decision.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. And just to expand on that, I guess my next question would be, would some of those other commercial properties in those corridors that are basically single-unit homes but are operating in a commercial use as opposed to residential use, if they decided that they wanted to convert, or build an ADU and then, and somehow shift that, that commercial use, would that, would they also be grandfathered in?
So I guess if you're in C1, you couldn't convert back to residential as the primary use?
So it would only apply to these existing... So, it's, so it would only apply to these existing 50 houses that are used as residential but in commercial zones? So, anyone that's operating as, as a business currently could not decide to flip-flop?
Right. Exactly.
And, and like we have a good, like, barometer on, on those that are used, like, do all of them have business licenses and are legal and like we could track them?
I think that would be up to our building department to determine the use, the use of the building. But, yeah, we, we wouldn't know if it was commercially operated versus residential most likely.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Cool. I just had a quick question. What if those 50 properties, what if they wanted to build an ADU? Could we just have them apply for a zoning change or something like that to, like, I think Mr. Ohm said, like, a mixed use or, or something like that? Is that something that's possible that maybe we don't pass it for these commercial buildings now, but if they want one later on, they could apply for a zoning change?
I think that's a possibility. I mean, in a lot of these cases, I think we would be able to recommend a zone change, but it is a property by property. It's case by case. I wouldn't want to make a blanket determination, especially for those that are more embedded in the neighborhood where MUN may not be appropriate, but maybe are, are something could be. But that, so, yes, the answer is yes, but I think it would be a very case by case. And not in all cases either.
Okay. That makes sense. I think for, for me right now, I would say that if we could leave this, these ones off, and then I think like Ms. Hulteen said, come back to it in the next couple of months as we have further discussion on it. Because I do think that with our commercial corridors, there's probably a better use at some point for, for some of those. But, I mean, obviously, it's their property. But, you know, I don't know that we want to make it so that those are forever residential properties. So, I think we do want to protect our neighborhoods, but that is definitely a, a commercial area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen and then Counselor Dozeman.
Oh, thank you. I was actually going to try and get to a consensus if you have something else to add. Ms. Dozeman?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment that if we're going to be discussing this at a later time, I think, you know, the semantics actually matters. And so, it would say, this says, the alternative approach is to allow ADUs as an accessory use to all single-unit homes regardless of zoning. This would include not only the single-unit homes in residential agricultural MUN and, and new PRD districts, but it would also include any existing single-unit home in commercial districts. And so, that's like the verbiage that I'm trying to wrap my head around is there are other single-unit homes, even if they're not operating as a primary residential use, they exist and therefore they would count the language that we have written here, in my mind.
Yeah, I think the intent of that language was just any existing single-unit home that is residential.
I think any other interpretation would require us to kind of determine the, based on the, the building type and make a determination that even though it's used commercially, we think it was a single-unit home. And I think that's a, a tough area for us to make that interpretation. I mean, it could be that it was built in that fashion because that was their desired design, but in fact has been commercial for decades or even forever.
Counselor Weaver.
My comment was that I agree with Counsel Stites and with the idea that we deal with these a little bit later so we can move on to the other things. Thank you.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a consensus that we move forward with the original intent, that we reach consensus and that we address these, these 50 units at another time when we're looking at what we'd like to see happen with our commercial quarters.
So, consensus is to?
The zoning district.
By zone district.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. That was really helpful.
Okay. Well, we got through number one.
Number one. Number two. This one is, I thought number one would be an easier one. This might actually be another not easy one. Or maybe it is. The owner occupancy requirement and prohibition on separate sale. So, we did get consensus from city council to require that either the primary dwelling unit or the ADU to be occupied by the property owner, which would then allow the other unit to be rented out or to be occupied by another family member. And this is typical of front-range cities. And this is usually determined based on their legal and permanent residence. So, voter registration, vehicle registration, there's precedent. Denver does this exact same thing. And these are typically produced at time of building permit application. We're not making a recommendation here, but the point of this discussion topic was really to let everyone know about evolving best practice around this and just what other cities are doing beyond Colorado. So, Colorado is a little bit, I don't want to say the word behind because that implies how I feel about it. But I, I think Colorado's approach is different than a lot of other states that have been more at the forefront of ADU legislation where these are not actually requirements in that owner occupancy requirements can potentially make financing and building ADUs difficult. And they can also be challenging to track and enforce. And some states have actually prohibited that practice statewide. And, and the AARP also does not recommend that approach. So, there's what Colorado does and what Wheat Ridge is proposing to do in One Camp and then kind of this evolving best practice throughout the rest of the country, or at least in some states. But that said, the ordinance would need to include the provision regardless of where you land on owner occupancy, that the ADU cannot be sold separately from the primary dwelling unit. That's really important to include, and that would be as part of a deed restriction, which runs with the land. So, if someone new buys the property, they would still not be able to sell the ADU separately. That's, that would essentially be an illegal subdivision. It wouldn't be allowed. And wherever council lands on the owner occupancy requirement, that could also be included in the same deed restriction. So, again, it runs with the land. So, the question is, based on all that information, would you still like to move forward with the owner occupancy requirements in addition to what is already necessary, which is that prohibition on separate sale?
Ms. Nauselbeck.
I really appreciated how this was all laid out. And I just really appreciated the component here with some feedback from AARP and why they don't support this with owner occupancy. There's, I think, one of the reasons that we've been talking about ADUs and what we've been hearing from folks just in that last presentation from Let's Talk Wheat Ridge is we need more options and we need, we need to have some flexibility in this space. And I think that by, by not necessarily going with some of the more restriction, restrictive practices like, like you mentioned, Scott, like Denver, but moving forward with the, the best practices is a really great way for Wheat Ridge to be on the forefront of this. And we are, we are, I don't want to say behind the eight ball, like, on this, but we are in, in having these, this, this ordinance on the books. And, and so, the one positive in that is that we can get creative and, and find ways to make this more accessible and less cumbersome for our residents. And also, when it comes to the sale of homes and the financial burden, we have to do everything we can do in this housing market. So, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. As we're charting into new waters, I think it'd be good if, if we did have the owner occupied. You know, we have, we do have, we're lucky to have some data from the Let's Talk about how, like, my particular district fills about ADUs. But I, I think as we start something new, you know, I think it might be a good idea to have the owner occupied and get some feedback. And things could change down the road where maybe that wouldn't be necessary. As far as trying to track and change, you know, subsequent owners of that property, perhaps we could look at something that the city of Fort Collins does with, when you sell a house, the, the owner and the buyer have to sign a document that says that this will not be no more than three more, like, unrelated people, you know, will be renting out this piece of property. Because, the issue was because of the college town, Boulder might have something similar, but it's the owner and the buyer both have to sign this piece of paper. And so, you know, there's no illusion of how many people are going to be, you know, renting. Because it was a problem in the neighborhoods where you had too many people living and you had too many cars. And so, that's kind of my point is perhaps we could, I know it's a little more, you know, detail for, for staff and the city, but that'd be a way that we could possibly track and change where you might have this type of paper that would follow the, the buyer and the seller. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. I, you know, when we first looked at this, and there, you know, we were, we also had the recommendation from AARP to not make it owner occupied. I think that what, and, and for me personally, I would, personally, I would rather go with like the national standard. However, we are here to listen to our community. And in our resident survey, they, there was very much a majority to require owner occupied in the survey, in the questions very specifically asked. And, and so, I think that it's important for us to keep that in mind, that for this to fit, for this to fit the outfit of our community, how does it look? There, you know, like, when we were looking at short-term rental regulations, there was definitely some stuff that was not standard national practice, but it was stuff that we did because it fit our community and the makeup of our community. So, I, I think that we need to keep the owner occupied piece in there. I understand that it's not the national standard. And, but I think that it's something that's important to our community, that we keep that.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As we had discussed in our previous study session regarding ADUs, I've, I've always kind of been apprehensive about regulating ADUs and requiring an owner occupancy require, or requirement. And with, with the Let's Talk Wheat Ridge facts and figures that they gave us, that 50% of our city is rentals and 70% of District 4 is rentals, you know, I think that that kind of lends to at least tipping my opinion in allowing for properties to not, or ADUs to not be owner occupied. So, many of our houses are already rentals. And I think that if we're talking about affordable housing and the need in our community, then we really need to be addressing better uses and to allow especially decent homeowners that, that are landlords as well to build ADUs and allow for an additional renter. I think that that would be beneficial. However, Ms. Hoppe, or Councilmember Hoppe, I do agree that our surveys have indicated a preference for owner occupancy. So, this might be something that in order for our community to stomach bringing ADUs and, and regulating ADUs, that we maybe look at that at a later time. But I, I have felt strongly that we should, you know, be at the forefront of this conversation. And, and I've, I've wanted this on an agenda since I was elected the first time in 2017. And so, I just, I, I'm, I'm concerned that maybe we are kind of passing a lot of legislation that we're having to revisit fairly quickly because of the changing demographics. And I don't want that, this to be another situation like that. We've seen that with the noise ordinance. Now, we're talking about addressing, you know, ADUs and commercial properties at a later time. And, and so, for me, in, in order to avoid that in the future, I think that maybe we should reconsider our owner occupancy requirement.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I support owner occupied for the primary resident. I am very concerned about what this is going to do to neighborhoods. Not all landlords are good landlords. So, and also, they would be absent. They don't see what's going on. So, I'm concerned about the neighborhoods that are already there. And when ADUs first came up, it was about having a place for your, you know, older child that wants, can't afford somewhere, or for your parents or whatever. They're going to turn into short-term rentals. I don't know. Because I can just see the writing, we're opening a can of worms here. And if there is not some type of, you know, watching what's going on, and the person to do that, I would think would be the owner of the primary residence to see what's going on in the accessory dwelling unit. So, I mean, I can already see it. I mean, I hear what you're saying, like, oh, it's going to be great and all these kinds of things. We went through the deal with short-term rentals for a long time. And this is about making money. And also having an accessory dwelling unit because people are having a hard time affording where they live. So, I am in support of owner occupied for the primary residence. Thank you.
If, if we were to go the other way and not have owner occupied, would, would we, would that be an incentive to have more rental housing? I mean, would, would then people buy a, buy a house or take the house that I have and say, well, I can, I can now build an ADU and turn my house into a rental? And so, you'd have two rental properties on one property?
Possibly. I don't want to speculate about that in, in Wheat Ridge, but in communities, and again, we're not taking a position on this. We just wanted to present kind of updated information. In communities that have no owner occupancy requirements and kind of are more permissive, ADU production is much higher. So, there is definitely a correlation between requirements like this that are potentially more onerous and actual production of housing.
Do you know, as they've done that, have their, have their rental, the, the percentage of rental properties to owner-occupied properties changed significantly?
I'm not sure about that. ADUs are really a drop in the bucket compared to all housing types.
Okay. I, I want to make sure that Counselor Stites got in the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think you kind of asked my question there a little bit too. But I was just going to say that it seems like somebody with a little bit of money here can buy a, quite a few properties, put two houses on one without going, without going through any rezoning or, or, or division. And basically, now you've got two rentals on one property, and you could do that several times. Is that right?
That, that could be a possibility.
Okay. I think I would definitely support, at least for now, owner occupied. And then, you know, if it's going great, cool, we can, we can look at it. But again, I, I think like Ms. Hutchinson said, I don't know that this was exactly, we, we wanted to build a whole new rental market out there. I think this was more for people's older families and, and, and whatnot. So, I'm going to support the owner occupied for now. Thank you.
Counselor Hulteen.
I was going to ask for a consensus, but it looks like Ms. Nauselbeck has something to say.
I just wanted, thanks, Counselor Hulteen. I just wanted to offer up another scenario of how this could also play out. So, personally, I have parents who are retired and if, and they're looking to sell their home. And they could sell their home right now for a million dollars because the housing market is crazy. And it's not a, it's not a fancy house. It's not what you would think, a million-dollar houses. If they had built an ADU, they wouldn't be able to do what they are planning to do in this scenario, which is they're planning to rent out their home and move, move out. And so, it would not be owner occupied. And if they had an ADU, which they don't have an ADU in their back, in their backyard right now, but they wouldn't be able to, to do that scenario in their retirement. They would have to sell, they would have to sell their home or not have a, a renter in their ADU. Or could they, could they have a renter in their main residence but not the ADU?
Sure. You can, you can rent, you can, you can either, the owner could occupy the main structure or the accessory structure. That's correct?
That's correct. I, I see what you're saying, though. I mean, it, it would take a certain type of buyer for a property to want to buy a property within ADU if they knew they were going to have to live there. And not- knew they were going to have to live there. And not, that's not for everyone.
But a new owner wouldn't have to use ADU, right? They could just leave it vacant.
Councilor Hulteen?
So I'm going to go ahead and ask for consensus on this. We have an indicated majority of council members who support retaining the owner occupied provision. And I'll just say that, you know, standing alone, I, I agree. I think I would prefer to not have it because I, we have a need for affordable housing in our community and this is one way of bringing it about. However, I do feel like we have a pretty clear voice from our community that has indicated this is their comfort level. And I just want to speak to, you know, one of my constituents came in and gave comment on this topic and, you know, was, was saying, we're, we're just changing the zoning code to, you know, we're just changing it and making something illegal legal. And, you know, we change our zoning code all the time. We're going to be talking about bulk plan again here. And, and we revisit our zoning code all the time because our community is changing. And I think especially, and it was really sensitive to Ms. Dozeman's comments about revisiting a lot of our policies in somewhat short order. But I think when we're doing something for the first time and it's this complicated, I think that's really healthy. And we heard earlier from our Let's Talk that, that we can learn a lot. So I'm really open to starting with this more restrictive approach. And if we're finding that revisiting that is creating housing opportunities or, you know, meeting our community's needs, that we can do that. So I'd like to ask for a consensus that we retain our owner occupied requirement.
And how did the, how did the folks online vote?
Yes, in favor.
Okay. Looks like we have consensus then to, to require owner occupancy. Mr. Ohm?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have one last comment. You know, there, there could be possibly another option that would be akin to the short-term rental where the city could craft it such that you, the owner could have, just like the short-term rental, the owner could have one property that would not be owner occupied. Just one. Just so that would limit, because that's what we do, the short-term rentals, right? So you can have one, one property that's not owner occupied. And then if you want to buy, you know, you can buy one more, but that would have to be owner occupied. And so then that might give you a little flexibility.
Excuse me. Vote on number three?
Sure. This one hopefully is more simple. It's regarding parking. I know I am. So at the last meeting, council's consensus was to require one additional off-street parking space for properties with ADUs. But council also asked staff to look into flexible models or codes for sites that may not be able to accommodate onsite parking. And in this case, there are already sections in our zoning code that allow for flexibility based on existing conditions. Urban gardens, for example, require, may require onsite parking if there is not adequate on-street parking for adjacent streets. And in this case, our code actually defines what that is, which is there is curb and gutter adjacent to the property. So, or that's like wide enough to accommodate a vehicle. So that's staff's discretion, but essentially that's not a lot of the city. But in there, there are some areas, especially East Wheat Ridge with formal curb, gutter and sidewalk, that could potentially not require parking space for urban gardens. And so our question is, for example, for areas with established on-street parking with adjacent curb and gutter, would council consider eliminating the onsite parking requirements for newer existing ADUs and follow the approach of urban gardens? And like I said, this is mostly in East Wheat Ridge. They're limited in lot size and are alley loaded. So a lot of times it would be really difficult for properties to add an additional parking space. And requiring off-street parking for all properties without flexibility could potentially limit the development of ADUs in these areas, which is why we're recommending this flexible approach. Also wanted to point out that our parking requirements for single-unit homes is pretty high compared to surrounding communities. For areas with no on-street parking, so no curb and gutter, we require four off-street spaces. And most surrounding communities are at two or less. So our parking requirements are already high. Adding an additional fifth parking space would make them even higher. But like I said, we're still recommending a flexible approach where we ask for the parking first unless there's a, a condition that would preclude it.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. After I read the memo, I knew our, our, our parking requirements were higher than most of our surrounding areas. I didn't realize how high they were. And so me personally, I think that we should just delete the parking requirement in total.
Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you. Yeah, we do have a high parking requirement. I will say sometimes it's still nowhere near enough. But I, I agree. I think, I agree with Ms. Hoppe. I think the, the parking requirement is unnecessary in this instance. It's incredibly difficult to enforce for our neighbors who don't have ADUs and creates a burden that I think, again, I'd like to remove as many burdens and really support ADUs to, to work with our community. And, and, you know, we, we hear a lot of times in this room that, you know, people are complaining because people are parking on the street, but the street is public space. And I think, you know, if we, the more parking we require, the less affordable our housing is. So I support removing the parking requirement entirely.
Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm in favor of giving staff whatever the flexibility they need. So if they, they feel that, you know, to ask first and, and then see where they're at, I'm in total support of that instead of a, just a mandating a strict number. So I'm, flexibility is the, what I'm looking for with, for staff.
Thank you. Councilor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Not all neighborhoods have cars parking on the street. So if you have a ADU, and how many places really have just one car? I mean, many places have two, four, whatever. So I'm thinking about the existing neighborhood, the people who are living there. And I have concerns about that. If you're going to build an ADU, I feel that there should be parking spaces if, if able for those cars to be. They're not going to just have one car. Then they have company. Then they have parties or they have whatever. And not every neighborhood has cars parked on the street. So I, I'm just thinking of the neighborhoods. I think just doing a blanket thing about when you say curb and gutter, not, not every neighborhood has that, you know? They don't even have sidewalks. So it's a safety issue also. People walking in the street, kids, bike riders, things like that. So it can be a safety issue. I think there should be some requirement for parking if you're going to spend all the money to do an ADU. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nusselbeck?
This is a question for Ken or Scott. And I know we met earlier this week and I was asking you a lot of questions. But this is another one. The four parking spaces, does that include your, like if you have a two-car garage, are those, if those two-car garage spaces, are those considered parking spaces? Or are they four parking spaces on like your driveway pad?
The garages count towards the total.
Okay, thank you.
And can you, can you explain the difference between the curb and gutter, where we, where we have curb and gutter and the parts of the city that don't have curb and gutter? Because there's a lot of that, too. How does that impact whether you can park on, on the street or not?
From, so the way our code distinguishes it is for houses with established on-street parking, so with curb and gutter, there's just two off-street spaces required. But for a lot of the city, we don't have that. And so that's when the requirement is for four. So there are, I mean, that's, I guess that's more of an engineering question. I mean, there's places with curb and gutter where we allow street parking. And then there's places that are kind of unimproved and it's more informal. But I, isn't street parking allowed pretty much everywhere unless there's a sign that says off-street?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's, there's probably a lot of different scenarios to play out. I mean, I think, you know, a typical local street section with curb and gutter in East Wheat Ridge, you know, definitely has on-street parking. But I think there are also scenarios in the city where we don't have curb and gutter, but there's still adequate right-of-way and physical space to safely park. So I agree with Scott. I think it really would be an engineering question to say, to evaluate the street. I mean, it could be that they have an established shoulder that's maintained with gravel, so it's an appropriate surface to park on. So there's probably a handful of different scenarios out there. But I think we're evaluating based on the engineering, safety aspects of being able to park a vehicle.
And your recommendation that staff sort of make those kind of decisions on a case-by-case basis is sort of based on that, on that analysis? Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. I guess my question is, if we get rid of the, the parking requirement in total, like it's not attached to the ADU, parking requirements still go with the property, though. So it's not that there will be zero parking requirements. It's that it just will go along with the property. So if the property is required to off-street parking spaces, the property still has to have two off-street parking spaces, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So again, I guess my, my suggestion would be, be that we get rid of it completely.
Councilor Stites, I didn't, I didn't know whether you had raised your hand for, on that or not, but I didn't want to skip you.
Oh, thanks, sir. I, I would support the staff having the flexibility, but I do think that as you're building a whole new house, and most people are already using all the parking spots that they have anyway, you should probably have a spot for the person that's going to live in that house. So I, I do support staff having flexibility in the places where there's no possible, no possibility to have that parking spot. But I do think that if, if possible, we should still require it. Because I think Ms. Weaver and I probably get five calls, 10 calls a month of people pissed about somebody parking on a, on a street somewhere. So, and I know it's legal, but it's still an issue and it's still annoying for all the neighbors. And we've heard that a few times, that the people who live here, live here. And so we should support those people, too. So I, I would support having some sort of parking requirement, but giving the staff the flexibility to do what they need to with that. Thank you.
Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you. If we were to kind of take this more general flexibility approach instead of mandating that there's curb and gutter, how would that be memorialized in this? If we're saying it's, it's at the discretion of staff to decide whether additional parking would be required?
If it's beyond just curb and gutter, I mean, I think our recommendation was in areas without curb and gutter, the flexibility would apply. I mean, I think we'd need some more direction from you all of what other factors might need to be in play. For example, lot size, if you have a really small lot, you may not be able to add a parking space just based on where the house already is. So we'd look for you to give us more direction on what other factors might be in play. And that, that of course then makes things more complicated.
Because, I mean, when I read this, one of the thing I thought of, I was like, you know, on my block, there's literally like curb and gutter in front of one house and then not curb and gutter in front of the next house. And then two houses down, there's curb and gutter again. And so what is the, I, I think it's, are we talking about, I think it gets really complicated because is it, there's curb and gutter in front of that house, but the neighbor might not have it. So I think it's, it's even just curb and gutter requirements becomes less clear-cut than any of us would like it to be. And so, I mean, I, I hear that people would like it to be a requirement. I don't know how to come up with something that's flexible. So I, I would still support just removing it as a requirement. And if we're, again, if we hear later that this is, we have too many people parking in neighborhoods, we can bring it up. And it probably is dealing with rentals and a whole bunch of other issues. I doubt that this one issue is going to impact that more than the, I can just say in my neighborhood, there's plenty of residents who've lived there for a long time who could use some more parking. So anyway, so I support that we remove it all, altogether. Because I think anything else is going to get really granular and hard to, hard to do.
Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. So you could have a large lot on a cul-de-sac, but the linear foot of that curb and gutter would be very small, which wouldn't really support. So the only way I could see applying anything would be on a, not to complicate things, but a linear foot of the property. You know, that would be the most kind of straightforward approach of like, well, how many cars can I really put around? Like, I live on a corner, so I can park a lot of cars. But if I had a cul-de-sac, curb and gutter, I, I, I've lived on a cul-de-sac and I'm hard pressed to, you know, put one in front of my property.
Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I also support removing this requirement, given the fact that we require a larger amount of parking spaces already in our, in our code. And I will say, like, I live near a multifamily unit. And even though they have ample parking, a whole lot, a whole parking lot behind them, a majority of them park in the front of the complex as well as in front of my home. And so that takes up spaces in, in, in front of my house. And although it can be frustrating and annoying, it's public space. And as long as they don't park in my driveway, then they're, or in front of my driveway, then they're not breaking the law.
Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a consensus that we remove the parking requirement from this ordinance.
Okay. This is a consensus to remove the parking requirement from the ordinance? I see three, four, five. Okay. There's barely a consensus. Let's go on to item number four.
All right. Thank you. We can always skip this one. So this is, this is really the big topic. And this is, we got consensus at the last meeting to allow pathways for legitimizing legal non-conforming or unsanctioned dwelling units into legal ADUs.
Excuse me, Scott. Do you mind if I, would this be a good time maybe to take a quick break before we dive into this one, since it might be lengthy?
I was going to take a break at 8:30. That would be two hours. So if you think you can make it, we'll get this one done before then. Or we'll take a break.
Okay. Sorry.
We'll try. Yeah, so we got, we got consensus to allow pathways to legitimize legal non-conforming or unsanctioned dwelling units into legal ADUs. And this would allow potentially existing accessory structures or portions of the home to be renovated or reconstructed into an ADU. That's part of the new ordinance. Council did request more information, but gave the direction to provide flexibility where possible to encourage property owners to get into compliance and obtain the proper permits. And we're making a recommendation pretty similar to council's direction, but we did provide a lot of additional information below in the memo, but also as that separate attachment, the ADU approvals examples. And there were five different examples in that memo. Examples one and two are really what a new ADU would look like, and those are fairly straightforward. Example three is what a legally non-conforming existing ADU would look like. Example four is an unsanctioned or illegal ADU. And then five, there's always going to be some unique circumstance. So that's what we were able to modify the existing ADU checklist into was that, that attachment that provided all those different examples. And it would then allow that staff to classify what type of ADU we're looking at and then determine what zoning or building code requirements would need to be applied. So the easiest one is if substantial evidence appears to support that the dwelling is legitimate, then it could likely get ADU status, legal ADU status without modifications. And that would be that example number three, where we're looking at what the applicant has provided to us. We're doing our own archival research. And then we can just make that determination. At that time, they would then execute that covenant, which we now know will include the owner occupancy requirement and the prohibition on separate sale. And then they get a certificate of occupancy. That's fairly straightforward. So this is where it gets a little bit more difficult, which is if there's insufficient evidence to determine that a dwelling unit is legitimate, no permits were ever obtained for the work to convert it, then the ADU ordinance requirements may or may not need to be met and permits would be required, to require them to obtain a new certificate of occupancy. And this is the example number four in that approvals checklist. So in this case, we've already determined that it's not legitimate. There's no permits or anything like that. And so then this is really where the discussion begins. So before we would turn it over to the Building Department, which is its own thing, wanted to talk to you firstly about, we'll have an ADU ordinance. Does council want all Does council want all or some of those requirements to be met in order to legitimize an existing but unsanctioned unit? And so in that ordinance, the list that's in the first half of the memo, that's size, setback, height, parking. But it may be difficult for someone to meet those requirements if there's a structure that's already too large, or violates a setback or height. So council has the discretion to waive some of those requirements, and, and that's what we're recommending, is to provide some of that relief. So not requiring that all new AD requirements be met in order to have an existing structure get into compliance and, and get a CO. And then we'll pause there and talk about that first, and then we'll get into kind of the, the Building Department recommendations.
Can I just ask for you to clarify legitimacy? So I did see in here that we don't have building permits from before 1969, so potentially it could be built before 1969, we would not have the permit. It's a, it's a illegal, non-conforming, like where does legitimacy lie in there?
Yeah, and part of that is from the original ADU checklist that we looked at the last time. There are other examples. For example, it was built in 1920, it was originally part of the house, we have records showing that it's always been occupied as a residence, or we've recognized it as a carriage house through other, you know, just property research. The county recognizes it as a legitimate structure. There's, you know, potentially utility permits for that building. So there's other ways besides permitting data that we could still determine that something was legal. We could even look at satellite images or old photography and, and just like be able to tell. But it is a very case-by-case.
So, and something that's not legitimate would be something that somebody built, you know, maybe 10 years ago, in their backyard, kind of under the radar, nobody really, really figured it out? That's an illegitimate structure?
That's one example, yes.
Okay, great.
What we're calling unsanctioned in the memo, just for, for reference. Counselor Omen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question. Is a basement considered an attached ADU?
Yes.
So I see here that, it talks about, you know, all building requirements could be, could be met for attached, unsanctioned. It says you'd have to have fire separation between units. So what is the, the equality between you have a house, it has a basement, they convert the basement into an ADU before it's legal, versus somebody's just renting out their, you know, their bottom of the basement, but it doesn't have a stove, you know? And so it's basically somebody's still living down there, but they don't have that fire separation.
Yeah, and that's, that's actually the next discussion item about the Building Department requirements, because that's a building code issue, that's not a zoning code. I will say, you know, if there's not cooking facilities or separation, then that's just part of the main house, and that's already permitted. So, you know, someone could have a wet bar in their basement, they could have another bedroom down there and have essentially a tenant in there, but it's, that's not considered a separate dwelling unit. A separate dwelling unit is that fire separation, that separate entrance, and a full kitchen.
Counselor Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to answer your first question, then, Scott, what you're looking for is, do we like the way that staff is suggesting that we address these incidences? And we will talk about the things about the Building Division, electrical, fire separation, that kind of stuff, next.
Yes. Yes, zoning, zoning first, then building.
I do like the way you're looking at the zoning. We support it.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when, when will we be discussing that further?
It's just the next.
It's just the next one?
Yeah, so the next part of the memo.
Oh, the next topic, okay. So I guess, you know, when former council member Urban and I asked for this to be on the agenda, we initially wanted to separate and first address non, existing non-conforming ADUs, which now we're calling unsanctioned, correct?
Yes, so there's two, there's two groups of these existing. There's the legal non-conforming, which we have kind of maybe already determined that are out there, or ones that are based on evidence that could be provided, could be legalized very easily. Whereas this number four category, the unsanctioned, is that other group, which was never permitted, or we don't have evidence to support that it's a, at this time, a sanctioned dwelling unit.
So my, my concern with, with the unsanctioned ADUs and bringing them into some sort of compliance, is that some of these that are listed, electrical upgrades to comply with the current code, fire separation, separate or split HVAC, I mean, some of these are very costly, and, and I'm not sure that it would be necessary to, to bring them into the current code if they're, if they're still safe and, and habitable. So I guess my question is, like, how much relief or how much discretion would staff have to give relief to those unsanctioned ADUs?
And that's, I, I kind of want to talk about the zoning requirements first. Those aren't zoning requirements, that's building code.
Okay.
So in the unsanctioned, if you're looking at example four, we're on number three right now. Sorry, example four, number three.
Number four.
Because that's, that's a different issue. That's, that's a building code issue where a lot of those probably couldn't be waived, but we're, we're talking about the zoning requirements right now. So what's going to be included in the ADU ordinance, like the maximum size of 1,000 square feet, the setbacks, the height of 25 feet, parking? And then, yeah, I think that's a, that's a more complicated issue, the building codes.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely support including the relief in the code, the zoning code for this. I think, you know, the intentions behind the new ADUs is we're bringing in something new to our community, but this discussion is about existing buildings that have been existing, and where they're placed on the lot, and a lot of those zoning regulations that shouldn't inform new construction. You know, we're just, we, I want maximum flexibility to be able to legitimize existing buildings that, you know, are on people's property and should be maintained, and, and as long as they're safe and are realized, we're talking about building code next. But as far as zoning regulations, maximum relief definitely has my, my support.
Counselor Dozeman.
I, I would agree, and I think that we're going to find that a lot of these, like, looking back at the historical information, that many of these probably won't be legitimate, or we won't have information because it predates 1969. But I, I think that, especially if a property owner took, took ownership after, you know, some sort of improvement or, or illegal dwelling unit, or non-conforming dwelling unit was, was built, and, and they, they bought it after the fact, they shouldn't be penalized for somebody who, who did that prior to them taking ownership of the property. And so I think maximum relief in that, in that, and discretion on staff would be the best-case scenario.
All right, not, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear Counselor Stites, or Counselor Weaver, any, any input you all want to make in this discussion? I don't have you on a continual screen, so I've got to ask.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm good. Staff's recommendations on that, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for consensus that staff, or that council supports staff recommendation to include relief in the code to avoid individual variance requests.
There's consensus for that. Terrific. Right on time. We're going to take a little break. We'll be back here at 20 minutes until nine, and just finish up these last few items.
Lights on, so let's go ahead and reconvene our meeting.
They're getting loud.
No, everybody's calmed down. So, how do I do that? Okay, all right. Terrific. So, we had, if I believe, completed item number four, and we're going on to item number five.
Oh, four and a half.
Oh, four and a half, okay.
Fourth B.
Well, we went to a different page here, so I guess is that, is this on attachment two that we're on four?
Page five of the memo, bottom of the page.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So, the second half of this discussion about the legal non-conforming and unsanctioned dwelling units is regarding the building code requirements. So typically, when we're looking at permits and reviewing them, the planning division or the zoning code, we look at those requirements first, and then the building department review is next. And met with the building vision, and they've noted that in order to kind of create a legal ADU out of what is there today, there are a lot of requirements that would have to be met that are related to the building code. And this is not just the city, wheat ridge building code, but we've adopted, I believe, the international building codes. So that would include potentially electrical upgrades to comply with current codes, energy compliance to the extent feasible, and adequate egress. And then for attached, those in basements or additions, fire separation between the units, and potentially split or separate HVAC systems. And from a building code standpoint, the building department noted that it would be more challenging to legitimize attached units versus detached units because of that fire separation requirement. And that's a building code requirement, that's not just a zoning code or wheat ridge requirement. That's true across pretty much, according to them, that's what it takes to create a separate legal dwelling unit. So, obviously, that poses some challenges for legitimizing basement units in particular. But there are some options, which I did not actually talk about in this, but essentially, if fire separation or separate HVAC could not be completed to convert into an ADU, the living space may still be able to be retained as part of the primary structure. So, that example that was brought up earlier about a basement bedroom with a wet bar, but it's not a separate unit, that still could be allowed. But in order to make it a legal, separate accessory dwelling unit, that fire separation would need to be in place. And obviously, that does not apply to detached structure. So, there's not really a lot that the city could potentially do about this. I mean, these are just building code requirements, so that could potentially be the biggest challenge, is just making some of those upgrades to the property.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will have to say, out of all the things that were called out in here, I do think that fire separation and adequate egress are number one important, important. Energy compliance, while I realize that that's a building code requirement, and yes, you know, maybe some of these older ones, you can, you know, pop holes in them and spray foam in the walls, you can lay down maybe some bats in the attic to try to help with that, but to be able to come up to our complete energy compliance wouldn't, probably wouldn't work for most of them. But the one that was the worst for me was the electrical upgrades to comply with current code. A lot of our homes and wheat ridge already don't comply with our electrical code. So I guess, and I understand that public safety is the driver, driving factor for this, and kind of what the building division is looking at is like, where do we find the most unsafe things, and old electrical is one of them. So my question is, could we potentially have a third-party inspection for deficiency or potential hazards, and if they find deficiency or potential hazards, that those would have to be completed for there to be, for them to become a sanctioned ADU? Or, because I guess my concern is that there, it can be very old electrical, but it's not unsafe, but we need someone to tell us if it's unsafe, like we need someone to tell us if it's not unsafe. And so my question is, do you think that we, instead of doing electrical upgrades to comply with current code, so they would have to upgrade all of their electrical if it was, you know, let's say it was built before 69, we found that it's an actual legitimate ADU, it's been there forever, but we're going to now make them bring their electrical up to current code, where even the main house probably isn't up to current electrical code. So could we have a third-party inspector to find any deficiencies or potential hazards? And if they find none, then we could certify it after that.
A couple of things on that. So first, this is again just that example number four of the unsanctioned ADUs. So these are not the ADUs that we could easily recognize as being allowed. These are ones that were illegally converted. They're not necessarily the historic properties that have been around forever, but we have evidence to support that they're an ADU. These are ones that are unsanctioned and have been kind of converted over time. And the second point is that we're actually proposing to require a courtesy inspection upfront before any of these determinations are made. And that's why we use the word "may" in the memo, so electrical upgrades may be required, but generally are necessary. So there, you know, if an inspector goes in and the electrical work was done in 2020, there might actually be that many requirements met. But we are proposing to require a courtesy inspection to review the existing improvements for compliance with codes, and the inspector would then make the determination whether work would need to be done essentially at that point. And that is number, if you're looking at-
So they would determine if the electrical is dangerous?
Correct.
Or has deficiencies? And if it doesn't, then they're not automatically required to bring it up to current, to current code?
I'm not, I don't know, I don't want to speak for the building department on that, but they would make the determination of what would need to be done at the time of inspection.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Does the set of, the building division criteria, does this same set of criteria also apply to short-term rentals?
Well, so I guess a short-term rental could operate in someone's house, so no, it doesn't.
Like it could apply to, there could be a short-term rental that's in a basement that has, you know, stove, everything, it's the exact same as, say, an ADU in a basement, it's just two different labels. And so what I'm asking is equally, you know, they're both dwelling units.
A short-term rental is not a dwelling unit, though. It's operating within a dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit is its own separate, and it needs some sort of, I guess, a certificate of occupancy to determine whether it's legitimate or not. So they're actually separate in that sense. I'm just pointing out and passing along what the building department told us would be possibilities, and these, the electrical upgrades, the energy compliance, egress, ceiling heights, those are all a list of things that they said may apply based on that inspection. But I don't want to say that each one would apply in every case.
Is there a, and I'll get to Mr. Hulteen in a moment, is this where you would, in the code, say what it, what's required for an ADU? I mean, is, you know, would the building code ask about, you know, regular dwelling units? Is it the same requirement for an ADU as it would be for dwelling, any other dwelling?
For the most part, yes. And just so everyone is aware, the building code requirements that I'm talking about right now are not in the, they wouldn't be in the ADU ordinance. This is just making you all aware of what potentially would have to happen from the building code side of things in order to make some of these. The zoning is easy, we've already, you've already told us that, you know, in the example, a lot of the zoning code requirements won't need to apply, but I'm informing you all of the more challenging aspects of the building code that apply to ADUs, to apply to single-family homes, they apply across the board.
How much of the utilities can be shared by the main structure and the accessory dwelling unit? I mean, can they use the same electrical service, the same gas service, the same water service, same sanitary service, the same heating plant? And those types of things, or is it a separate, are all those separated, or is it part and part?
That's, that would be up to the discretion of the individual districts, but typically, at least in the examples I've seen, ADUs use the same utility connections as the primary structure, but they might, you know, have a separate sub-meter or a separate HVAC system, but they would typically, not all the time, use the same water tap, same sewer tap, same electrical, but not always. And it would be up to the districts based on fixtures and other things. But again, that's not, that would not be included in the ordinance, that's just something a district would require.
So we wouldn't, so you, would you, would the building department refer this out to the districts to see water and sewer?
Any new construction already goes to the districts for review.
And so the electrical and the gas, if they were using the same, I guess, the same utility that it's between the landlord and his tenant to make that, those arrangements, I guess?
Yes, and more often, at least, we've worked a lot with our bad, or used a lot of their information, electrical is more often split than not, because you'll want to know, like, you know, what your tenant is using for electricity. But in order to get a new electrical meter, that's much more affordable than a new water tap, and is often, that's often not required by the districts.
And I think ideally, we, you know, we'd want a separate electrical service, so a separate unit has access to their own panel, should they blow a circuit, and be able to not have to go into another unit. So that would generally be something that would be required. Same thing with HVAC. Generally, you'd want a separate system, or at least separate controls of that, of that shared system. You know, to go back to some of the previous questions, I mean, this and the suggestion by Councilperson Hoppe, it's going to be tricky when we get into these unsanctioned ones, because there's really two layers of review from a building code standpoint. The first layer is, when was it built, and is it reasonably compliant with the codes under which it was built? And that's one set of questions. I mean, we wouldn't typically go in necessarily and trigger a full, you know, as associated with a remodel, there are certain triggers for when you require they go to the new codes in terms of an existing structure. So that's the first level of review, and we have recommendations based on that. The second level is then, what's triggered based on them wanting two units, right? And that's really where you get into the separate systems, the fire separation, the adequate egress. So, you know, you wouldn't necessarily, in my opinion, and we probably will need to continue these discussions after we get direction from council with our building division staff, but you wouldn't necessarily require a whole new electrical system if it was a house that was built in, let's just say, the 70s. But you, but it's hard to ignore the fire separation for sure, and that'll be, can be a challenging requirement.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. So I guess I need a little clarification on what you're seeking from us, because it sounds like what I'm hearing is that it's a lot of just discretion of the building code inspector, I mean, what guidance are you seeking from us?
The main guidance we're seeking now is kind of the last two bullet points of this section, so that is, the building code information was presented just to let you all know what it might take in the worst-case scenario for a dwelling unit to be legitimized, and in some cases, it might not be able to. The ceiling height might be too low in the basement, and it couldn't ever be a legal dwelling unit. But I think there are still some options to make that into a living space, it just couldn't be its own dwelling unit. So what we're asking for is, one, we're making the recommendation of providing a compliance window after the approval of the ordinance to obtain permits and a certificate of occupancy without penalty, so that's kind of addressing the fear of some folks that we're going after people or punishing people for coming forward with at least making the attempt to make, you know, get things in a compliance. And then after a certain period of time, if we're aware of dwelling units that are not legitimate, then that's when we could take more punitive action, or just the standard practice of a stop order or something like that. And that approach is recommended by the APA, the American Planning Association, and the ARP, just some sort of grace period. So we're asking whether you agree with that approach, and then, I guess, kind of more generally, do you agree with our recommendations about, well, I guess you've already kind of given us direction on that in terms of the zoning code recommendations?
So I guess my thoughts on this, and I'm just so aware when we're talking about these existing ones, is, you know, some of the issues that we're talking about, you know, could have been remedied years ago if we had adopted an ordinance recognizing the property earlier. And so, so- the property earlier. And so, so recognizing that, you know, we, it would have been a different building code had it, had it, had they been able to be a legal ADU at that time. So again, I'm not entirely clear how much input you're going to take from us and gets passed on to building code. But like, energy compliance to me seems, I mean, I'd love it. I'd love us all to be more energy efficient. But something like that just seems like it would be an owner's requirement. But things that deal with, like, safety seem, you know, incredibly important. And, you know, we want to preserve, we have some historic ADUs that are historic properties that we really value as part of our culture. So, you know, to the, again, to the maximum extent we're able to be flexible while still, you know, valuing the safety. That having been said, I mean, I definitely support giving a grace period for people so that we're able to, to work with people. Is there a possibility of these, this particular group of ADUs being able to come forward to, like, the Board of Adjustment or something to, to make a case for any of these non-compliances to get variances?
Are you asking about the building code specifically?
Yes. Yes.
Can I take that one?
There's not, is the quick answer. The Board of Adjustment has jurisdiction over zoning requirements. The Building Code Advisory Board has jurisdiction over appeals of the chief building official. But that's, it's not the same sort of appeal process, like a variance, where you're, you're acknowledging that, you know, I want to ask for approval of a project that isn't going to comply with this requirement. That's not what the appeal process is before the Building Code Advisory Board. It's basically going to them and saying, I think the chief building official is interpreting this section of the code wrong. And I'm asking for an interpretation from that body. So that's, that's a very different appeal. You couldn't just come in and say, well, I don't want to comply with the, the fire code or the fire separation requirement. You have to demonstrate to the Building Code Advisory Board that the chief building official is interpreting the fire separation requirement incorrectly.
Good. I have Counselor Dozeman and then Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I feel like the intent of this relief and discussing the non-conforming ADUs that, that exist in our community was really bringing them to light and allowing them for a space to be legitimized. And I'm, I'm not sure that we've met the mark here in, in encouraging that. I, you know, when we're discussing, like, punitive or ramifications of illegitimate ones, then I, I think that it would be more conducive for the homeowner to kind of remain in, not necessarily in hiding, but not, just not coming forward and out in the open. But I wonder if there's a mechanism of some sort that, whether it's through local works or another organization, where like, if these are going to be really costly improvements to be conforming, if, if there is some sort of grant system or subsidies that we could offer to, to hopefully bring them into compliance. I just, my concern is that they, that they are not, that they're not going to bring forth anything if, if we're requiring, you know, cost prohibitive improvements.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with what Counselor Dozeman just said. And just to, to expand on that a little bit, I'm, I do think we need to create incentive for people to come forward. Because even the electricity is, you know, I, I want people to have safe living environments, as has been commented before. But, you know, just as an example, at the farm, I have a second electrical journal and, or an electrical panel for agricultural activities. And just getting that extra panel creates a whole set of, of review of, well, what is that electricity feeding and, and what is the safety involved? And, and I'm, I'm just, it's almost like I'd like to see a, an example of, of one of these hypothetical non-conforming ADUs and what the realistic cost would be. Because I know what the cost was just to have a different, you know, an extra electrical panel put in. And it was, it was very expensive. And so having either a, a grant program or something, but, but as, as many of you know, we're talking about stuff that is in the tens of thousands of dollars to, to, to update when we're talking about electrical service and, and new, new panels and things like this. And, and I don't think that's going to be incentive enough for, for people to come forward if there's, if there's no opportunity for them to get some relief in, in, or incentive for, for changing these. So it's almost like, what, what is, what is the city's priority as we, as we tick down those? And, and what are we realistically expecting people to pay? Is it 25 grand? Is it 50 grand if they have to put in egress windows and update an electrical panel? And, you know, and, and so that they have a realistic idea of, of having incentive to comply. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Scott, can I just clarify something really quick? The, what we're talking about with the building code piece is, we're talking about the ones that are unsanctioned ADUs. That means we can't find anything, that, that, no, that means not the ones that were maybe built before 1969 but have been existing forever, or, these are the ones that maybe have been here for like 10 years, or somebody just put it in their basement five years ago, or, you know, these are not the one, these are not necessarily the historical type. And let me just be really clear, they probably, what we're calling historical probably doesn't have an actual historical designation. But, you know, the historical type ADUs. We're talking about the ones where we can find nothing on them, right?
That's correct. Yeah. This is the example four that we're talking about. So all those historic ones, we have evidence that they're legitimate. None of this would apply to them.
None of this applies. So I just, I want to make sure everybody's clear on, on that.
So, and, and we don't have any idea of the number, just so everyone is aware. I mean, but imagine that this example number four is a pretty small number.
And, and so this is not, this is not something that was, you know, built in the 50s, before Wheat Ridge was incorporated, didn't have anything from the county, you know. These are things that were probably pretty recent-ish, that, you know, within the last maybe 15 years or so that were done. Just trying to be under the radar type stuff.
Generally, not, not, you know, not necessarily all the time, but I think generally.
Generally, thank you. And, and so then now, in general, what we're saying, and, and so, one thing to keep in mind is that, you know, sometimes people will remodel their own basement and do their own electrical. And so this is the type of, as I understand it now, these are the types of electrical things we're looking at when we go in to do the initial, the initial survey. And we say, oh, appears as though this was built in the early 90s. And in the early 90s, electrically, it should live up to this level, and it is living up to this level. We're not saying, oh, appears as though it was built in the early 90s, and now you're going to come up to 2022 electrical, if there's zero deficiencies there. If it's good, there's no deficiencies and no safety issues, then we're not just going to automatically make them come up to 2022.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's what I attempted to describe, maybe not well. But is that when we look at these existing buildings, we evaluate them as existing buildings first, and relative to, you know, general building, plumbing, mechanical, electrical code. And then second, we evaluate the fact that the secondary unit is unsanctioned and therefore needs to meet certain threshold requirements in terms of what it looks like to have two units.
Great. And so, and with that clear, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ken.
No, I just say, and we, you know, we have, this is one topic that we hadn't broached with council really much at all, right? So, you know, we appreciate that this is our first opportunity, and your first opportunity, to really broach this. So, you know, I think whatever direction we get from you this evening is, is something that we'll take back to our Building Division staff and, and continue to flush this out with what we believe to be your intent coming out of this evening.
And, and so I just, I guess I would say, for that clarification, because I, I feel like what happened is everything got all lumped back into one, you know, with the, you know, existing non-conforming. But really, we're talking about, we had already said in the zoning piece, first part of four, we had already pulled those out separately. So now we are talking about the, the different separate pieces, and this only applies to one of those pieces. And then I see that you're asking for, for recommendations towards what would a compliance window look like? And then what would be, what would be considered a potential, if they don't comply, some potential fees? And, and so, in, in the memo, it's, you know, a certain period, one to two years, and potential, and if they don't do that, then a stop work order with double permit fees, which, which I think seems reasonable. And so I just want to be clear that a lot of the building piece, building code piece, we can't, as council, say they don't have to come up to the fire separation between the units. Like, we can't do that, right? And so I think that what we're doing is walking down a road that, and kicking rocks that are going to get us nowhere anyways. And so we probably should probably just move forward and, and start looking at like, what staff is looking for the, for the rest of, of this piece, which is, what do we think a compliance window should be? And, and what do we think a potential fee should be if they don't get within the compliance? And then, and then, and then we can move on to discussion topic five. And so my suggestion is two years, because I know that construction takes a long time. It's also kind of a short-staffed, short-staffed industry currently. And I think that a, a double permit fees is reasonable.
Yeah, thanks. I have a question. So, in, so let's just say my, my hoard basement was something I decided people should try and live in, with all the spiders. And, and so I, I was like, oh, I can go get a permit. So I call you and you come and you're like, you know, what were you thinking, Rachel Hulteen? This is a terrible idea. What, what does, help me understand, like, what the, the stop work order means in that instance? Like, what would I be required? Like, let's say I'm like, oh, I'm not going to spend $20,000 to bring my basement up. What is, what does stop order mean to me as a homeowner?
I think, I think you're, you can answer or not answer, but your, your existing basement is not finished as a second unit right now.
Oh, no, God, no. It's like really, barely good for my Christmas decorations.
Okay. So I think the stop work order would be if someone came in and said, hey, I've got this situation. I've got what looks to me like an ADU. Based on our research of the records, we think it's unsanctioned. And this is what you'd need to do to bring it into building code compliance. We had that conversation in 2022, and two years later, you, you haven't applied for any building permits to either decommission it or to bring it up to compliance with what we identified were the issues that needed to be addressed to bring it into compliance. That's when we would entertain the notion of a stop work order and say, we identified some life safety issues that you've chosen either not to address or just not communicate with us as to their status. So we'd want to have a conversation and, and see if, what, if anything was done. And that's when we'd use that stop work order tool. We, you know, we use it infrequently.
So, so decommission it would mean like I'd have to take out the stove or whatever things were making it habitable?
Right. Yeah. So for instance, you, and Scott described this, right? I mean, you could, we could give you that list, and then you'd just say, you know, I'd love to keep it, but I can't do all those things. And we'd say, okay, well, then you need to make it not look like a separate unit by getting rid of something like typically the kitchen facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Counselor Nosler Beck.
I, I think that this may get us a little off track here, but just as we're still discussing lethal, non-conforming and unsanctioned dwelling units, I'm wondering if for these existing units or ADUs, if we can revisit the owner occupied component to the, you know, non-conforming ADUs that are there, just because these are all potentially dwelling units that may be operating under that, that non-owner occupied situation right now. I realize that's not on the, the list of topics, because that's what we just decided before we stepped into this piece. But I want to give it another go if we can. And maybe that's not for tonight. I know, Scott, you and I have talked about some of the other options out there, too, that other states are doing in, in these cases. There's other options. But just throw that out there.
Counselor Hoppe.
I'm going to parking lot your, your, your idea real fast and try to finish getting through. So I would like to say, I would like to ask for consensus that, that the period of time in which to bring your ADU into compliance would be two years. And after two years, the stop work order, which also requires double permit fees to, to finish work, be applied. So I'm asking for consensus for that.
Okay, we have consensus on that.
Great. And then I'm going to ask if we can add that as a topic seven, so we can try to get through that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I was going to ask Ms. Nosler Beck if we can, her, I, her thought that she wants to work on, if we can add that as a topic seven, if, so that we can get through the six that the staff have presented to us. No, eight. Can we add it as a topic eight?
Yeah, I'm sorry, everybody, but I'm, I'm good with adding it as a topic eight. I just wanted to bring it in in that non-conforming piece, so.
All right. Thank you. The next topic is short-term rentals. So this did come up a little bit earlier. And the current ordinance has written, the short-term rental ordinance would allow an ADU to be operated as what we have called a partial home rental because of the owner occupancy requirement. So there's already an owner on site, and therefore the ADU could then be operated as a partial home rental. That's the requirement for a partial home now in the code, is that the owner has to be on site. And in, in this case, it would be in another part of a house, another bedroom, another floor. And now we're kind of expanding that to also include the ADU, whether that's the primary or the secondary structure. And so we're just proposing to modify the code to clarify that and add ADUs into that definition. So our, our question is, would you like to formally classify ADUs as partial home rentals because the owner of the property is required to live on site? The other option would be to categorize them as the whole home rental, which then counts towards the cap and has a lot of different requirements. And so we, I did provide some supporting information. We haven't had the proliferation of short-term rentals that we may have expected now over a year ago when the ordinance was passed. But I just wanted to lay all options on the table for you all.
Counselor Dozeman.
I would say that because we have the, the requirement for STRs, that if it's owner occupied, it's, it's just, sorry, I lost my place where I was reading. But, so I, I would say that it would be a partial home STR as opposed to a whole house. But I did want to ask about a scenario of, like, if, say you're converting your basement to an accessory dwelling unit, and do our short-term rental policies and licensing catch whether it's up to building code? Or would that only be if they were to come forward with an accessory dwelling unit? So like, say we have an, an existing ADU right now, and they wanted to license it as an STR, but they hadn't come to the city as, as an ADU just yet. If they had license for the STR, would we have caught that it is a non-conforming ADU? If they had licensed for the STR, would we have caught that it is a nonconforming ADU and not been provided that license? Does that make sense?
We we don't do official building code inspections as part of the STR licensing scheme. And Scott is our subject matter expert on this from a zoning standpoint too. But I believe what we require is for them to self certify on certain safety issues like smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguishers, you know, things like that as part of the licensing requirement, but we don't conduct the inspection.
So in theory, an ADU could exist currently that is nonconforming, but is operating as a short term rental?
Potentially. The other element that can started on was that we, as part of the short term rental license application, request information about where that is going to be operated. And so in some instances, we have said like, no, you can't actually operate a short term rental in an RV. So there there have been instances where we've kind of caught things on the front end of like, we can't actually issue a license. That hasn't come up in terms of ADUs, to my knowledge. I'm not the only one that reviews those licenses, but I don't I don't think it's come up.
Counselor Ohm.
And I think, I mean, I think often from a business model standpoint that a partial home STR, you know, kind of the Airbnb model is is literally a partial home, right? So you wouldn't have access necessarily to a separate kitchen. You might have a separate fridge or something like that, but you'd be sharing some of those common elements of the home with people that live there.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. So this comes back to that same question. It's possible hypothetically that there could be a basement in someone's home and they have a full kitchen in there. And at some point, they just they have to make a decision. There's two paths. And one path is to ask the city, you know, should I try this as an ADU? And they start to find out that there's a lot of appliance issues, which is going to cost a lot of money. The other path is to to do an STR, short term rental. And what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if if that person decided to do an STR, they can just sign something, say, everything's fine, and and that's it. But the person that decides they want to do the ADU, they're going to have to do this full compliance. And I, you know, I what I foresee is that it'd be, it's going to be a lot easier for that person to just check the box STR for that basement.
I will say not all basements are short term rentals and not all basements are ADUs. A lot of basements, even though there might be a separate kitchen or wet bar, are still connected to the main house only, so they don't have a separate entrance. We would never consider that to be an accessory dwelling unit. And someone could rent out a basement to a long term tenant as well. It's the the question, I guess, if someone wanted to convert their basement into the ADU with a totally separate entrance, separate electrical, that's when all the building code implications come up. It's not someone's just renting out their basement as a partial home short term rental. I I think I'm hopefully I'm making sense, but I think there's two separate kind of scenarios where someone's trying to convert it into a separate apartment versus I just want to rent out my basement and I still live upstairs. So I I don't know if there's that many cases where there would be like an illegal ADU that someone is trying to rent out to someone. I I don't know. I I just don't think that's that large of an issue. Could be wrong.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So help me understand. So the scenario that I has come up for me when I've been thinking about this is so I have my house and I build an ADU in the backyard. And I decide to, I want to get some income and do short term rentals. So I do a partial home short term rental with my primary residence and rent out my upstairs bedroom. And then I get a second short term rental license to rent out the ADU as a second. Would that be allowable with our current regulations about you're allowed to have one, one whole house and one partial house license in the city? Would I be able to do both of those licenses on the same property?
No, you get one of each and the partial home is a requirement that you're there. And so you could theoretically obtain a whole home license for your house, but that means that you're no longer living there full time. So that's when it counts towards the cap. I guess you couldn't have two separate licenses on the same property because the partial home requires that you live there. And unless you had three units, which you don't in that scenario, then that would be the only scenario where you could have the the whole home and the partial home on the same lot.
So I couldn't rent out one of my rooms with the partial home license and then rent out the standalone ADU in my backyard on short term?
You would have to pick one.
OK.
Yeah.
OK.
That kind of prevents a property from becoming entirely, I guess, a short term rental property with two separate licenses.
Additional discussion. Counselor States.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I agree. I I think that since the property owner actually is on site, I think that even if they're renting out a separate unit on their property, I think we could count that as a a partial home rental, I guess. So I I think I would go with staff's recommendation on that. And and that way it doesn't count towards the cap because we have a cap for how many actual short term rentals we can have, standalone short term rentals in each council district. So if we can make it a partial one, we can kind of get around that, right? Scott, is that right?
Can you repeat the question? I didn't know there was a question.
Oh, sorry. So so you're saying that if it's a partial home rental, there's no cap for that, right? There's only a cap for whole home rentals?
Correct. And that's because for a whole home, the property owner does not need to be on site. And so those can be more impactful.
That makes sense. So I would definitely agree that that would be a partial home rental moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Hoppe.
OK, I I would like to make a consensus that we move forward and then we define ADUs and the SDRs as partial home rentals.
Hands on that. OK, we have consensus on that.
All right. Topic number six is something that was not discussed at the last study session, but did come up in our research. And it's the topic of detached duplexes. So a duplex is a different is different than an ADU in a few ways in that both dwelling units of the duplex are considered primary uses. So they're not secondary secondary to each other like an ADU would be. The two units can be sold separately and the two units are required to be attached currently per the code definition. However, it is increasingly common for cities to allow a detached duplex configuration on the lot. And by that already allows a duplex. So in contrast to a traditional duplex, which is attached, a detached duplex is two primary dwelling units permitted on a single lot in two separate structures with a single unit in each structure. And so for a lot in R2, for example, that already allows a duplex, it could have in this scenario either an attached duplex, a detached duplex, a single unit home in an ADU or just a single unit home. And so our code requires that the two units in a duplex be attached, which is based on the existing definition of a duplex. But there has been a decent amount of interest from builders and homeowners to build detached duplexes on lots that already allow duplexes. So in this scenario, it would provide flexibility for builders and property owners without increasing density or changing other development standards. And it would also potentially help legitimize some properties where these conditions already exist. So like I said, this would only be permitted on lots that are already eligible for an attached duplex. And it would just essentially remove the requirement that those two units be attached. And there is an example image on the next page that kind of shows these duplex buildings can get pretty large. And when you break up the massing and have just two separate structures on the same lot, that structure is no longer this massive impactful structure. This would only really affect properties that are zoned R2 and R3 because those are the only ones that really allow duplexes. And then every other requirement would be the same, the same setbacks, the same lot coverage, the same parking requirements. It's just removing the requirement that they're attached. So again, just kind of tangential to this topic, but related and could, you know, potentially be perceived as an ADU, but they're actually a totally separate category.
Counselor Nosler Beck.
Counselor Dozeman really is holding on to the microphone. This, I've had some conversations with some constituents about the idea of the detached duplexes for some of the nonconforming properties out there. It is, in some cases, a solution for, you know, properties that have two buildings that are being used as two separate living spaces. And so I I am not in support of this detached duplex moving forward with new ADUs. But when we're looking at those nonconforming properties, I think it's important that we don't take this option off the table as well. So.
We'll have Counselor Ohm and then Counselor Hoppe and then Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mayor. The the graphic example that you showed up, the duplex is kind of a, you know, typical standard one. And I've I've seen one in the city of Wheat Ridge on Dudley that is much more interesting where the the duplexes are, they do share a common wall, but they are, I don't know what the word to describe it is, but they're like offset. And so when you when you see them, they kind of definitely appear as two different houses. It was really nicely done. And that shared, I'm not sure what that shared wall is, but it is not really the main wall. That might be a shared wall of, it could be a bathroom or something else. I would be, and I don't know what what the current code is. Obviously, the the city has allowed that. I'd like to see more of that. I don't know that I'm in really in favor of the the detached. I I don't know that you, do you go into detail of what that minimum separation is from the two detached duplexes is? Is it like five feet or?
That would be building code. Normally, it's five feet, but I I would defer to them on that. And and as far as the common wall, I believe it is also a five foot requirement that the structures have to be attached. But that's the only thing right now that is in the code is that the the building has to be attached, the two units have to be attached.
OK, thank you.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Let's start with, if they're detached duplexes, which by the way, I I have a really hard time with. It's not the single family homes, right? Or they're attached single family homes is how the Home Builders Association has puts it. But if they're detached duplexes, how does the party wall agreement work if there's no party wall?
The model that I've seen, and actually tandem home is the term Denver uses. It's, we use detached duplex because we already have duplex in our code, but it could go either way. Didn't want to have to type out both. So like a duplex currently is, there doesn't have to be a separate owner at all. Both units can be owned by the same property owner, and that would be the same in this scenario. Party wall agreement, from what I've found typically, is more of a condominium type agreement where it's not, there's no wall, but there's still some sort of common space agreement. And then you basically create a condo plat for that property.
And then I guess. Well, this is how I feel about and, you know, about tandem houses and detached duplexes is that I don't think this is something that we should be doing through the ADU currently, if it's something that we're looking at in the future. Because I my concern is that it's circumventing rezoning. So if the lot's big enough to house two single, single family homes detached, then I feel like those should get rezoned into the single family homes. However, I'm not completely against the tandem house idea. But I do want to say is I don't have enough information to really say, let's go for it. And while we're doing it, go ahead and stick that in our ADU stuff. So it's really something that I would like to see to come back for for more study rather than getting kind of swooped into into what we're doing tonight. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you. I have Counselor Dozeman and then Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. Yes, I would agree. I was going to ask if we can separate this out because I think that it would be really confusing for the public if we are simultaneously passing accessory dwelling units while discussing detached duplexes. I mean, and the first question that came to my mind was, so these these would be considered their single, single family units? Direct or is that not what would be?
No, it'd be its own category. So they, those would not then also be allowed to have their own ADU.
OK, that was my next question. OK. You saw where I was going with that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. My comments echo Counselor Hoppe and Dozeman's in that I feel like this is a standalone issue and that we have inadequate information tonight to really discuss it. And I feel like it's, yeah, I I feel like the intent of the first round of setting up the ADU doesn't touch with this as directly. So I'd like to ask for a consensus that we do not give any direction on topic six and rather give staff direction to bring it back as a standalone item.
OK, we have consensus on that. I have a question before we leave it, though. On the detached duplex, which is permitted on a single lot and you can sell each half of that duplex, how do you decide where the where the property line is to sell? Do you need to, do you need to replat it into two into two lots or?
So with a with a attached duplex, you create a party wall agreement and then you create a exhibit that essentially shows which portion of that property you're selling. And the same thing would be here. Normally, when you're buying a condo, you're buying the inside walls and then the common space is shared.
Right.
But it would kind of be up to the seller to determine where to draw those boundaries or if there are boundaries at all.
So so you wouldn't need to go through a plating process to create a property line between the two, the two dwellings?
No, duplex splits are exempt from the city's plating process. That said, if the property is large enough to be platted, and yeah, I think we kind of put this in here to talk about more as an idea than necessarily thinking it would be included in the ordinance. But if the lot is large enough to actually be platted for two single family homes, then they could just go ahead and go through our subdivision process. So that it's possible that the lot, the lot is large enough that it could just be platted that way and it wouldn't be considered a detached duplex at that point.
And and are there space requirements between the two duplexes?
If it was being platted, there would be setback requirements. But if there it's just on a single lot, then there would be the building code fire separation requirements. Normally, it's five feet between structures.
OK, thank you. Continue. Oh, Counselor Nosler Beck.
I was just going to say, in addition to the conversation, getting moved into another study session with some more information brought from staff, I'd also just like to also, I think one of the reasons this was brought in to the ADU conversation was that, you know, it's an option for that that primary ownership piece again and and that discussion. And so I'd like to bring up, when you all bring back some ideas on the topic, can we discuss the nonconforming component to this as well? Properties that may want to become duplex of like a tandem duplexes. I, is somebody going to go make a copy of that?
OK, we are, just just so you know, we've decided to pull the the last agenda items. So don't, don't worry that you have to save more energy for that. We just have to get through this piece tonight.
OK. Scott, go ahead.
All right. So discussion topic number seven, and this is the last one on my list, is just talking about discrepancies in our current zoning code. And so when we are creating definitions for accessory dwelling units, which I attempted to define earlier.
to define earlier, we also have to make those correspond with existing definitions in our code. And we actually have two separate definitions in our code, one in kind of the main zoning code, and then one in the mixed-use part of our zoning code, that defines single detached dwelling or single-family home. And those definitions are different throughout the code, same with two-family duplex, and then same with multiple dwelling, multi-family. So what we're proposing to do is, as part of this ordinance, where the definition of accessory dwelling unit has to rely upon the definition of dwelling unit, we're proposing to make those definitions all the same, so that there aren't separate definitions within the zoning code anymore, and there's just one definition of single detached dwelling, one definition of duplex, and one definition of multiple dwelling, instead of these multiple parallel definitions, which is not best practice. And also, Denver and other cities don't use family when determining the title of a single detached unit. They just call it single detached or single unit. It's not a single-family or two-family unit. So we've determined that those changes are considered conforming changes, and we just wanted to ask for direction to make sure that those definitions all correspond, and that there's a single definition of each, and then that way we can create a single definition of accessory dwelling instead of having to create another one to correspond with each chapter.
Okay, Counselor Hoppe.
I do see where some of the recommendations is, you know, also from preliminary conversations with the Equity and Race and Equity Task Force, and to kind of bring us into some, you know, equity compliance also, so I say, yes. Just do it.
Succinct. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. So I support the first question of changing instances of one-family, two-family, in the code to single detached and duplex, et cetera. And the second question, I'm a little bit split on. I think in the instance here where we're talking about changing the specific references of family, revising that, I'm just, I'm trying to remember, have we seen any specific recommendations from the Race and Equity Task Force yet?
No.
No?
No.
So I guess, this is a little bit of a sticky wicket for me, but, I mean, I'm looking forward to seeing those recommendations, and would like to consider them holistically. And if this is a standalone recommendation that, you know, can get presented, but it's kind of bundled here with other sort of nondescript recommendations that have come forth, but we haven't seen those yet. And I will holistically, enthusiastically support that idea, but I'd like to sort of see as a whole what the recommendations are, and better understand where those come from. So my inclination is to hold off and see what their recommendations are, and would love to see them and move them forward, but I'd like to see what those recommendations look like. Thank you.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess my, as I read this, it's, staff thinks that this is a good way to clean up our language, and also, here's another thing to support it, with preliminary conversations with the Race and Equity Task Force, it's something that they would support. So it's not necessarily that Race and Equity Task Force went to them and said, we want you to change it like it's a one-off, but it's something that it's, this is what we think should be in our language, and also, we had a preliminary conversation, Race and Equity Task Force said, yeah, it's actually good too.
Additional discussion? Counselor Nosler Beck.
Yeah, just from our, so, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I think that I agree with both Counselor Hulteen and Counselor Hoppe on this. When the Race and Equity Task Force presented out to us, they specifically said they were going to be addressing some of the housing issues in the charter, and I think, I'm drawing a lot of conclusions here, but we're probably talking about some of this language as we see it here, and so I'm reading it the same way that you are, Counselor Hoppe, and fully hear you, Counselor Hulteen, and wanting to see those recommendations coming as well, so, yes.
Okay. And just to clarify, the second question, I think, Scott, if I don't get this wrong, is just asking for support to explore options for future code amendments, not to actually maybe make any right now.
Right, yeah, we didn't have any recommendations from Race and Equity. This was just like putting it on the table. When I met with them, with the Planning Division, they had a lot of ideas, and it just so happened that this definition of family was something that we were able to address partially within the ADU ordinance, but they had a lot of other ideas that are not really related, but that, yeah, that last question is more to kind of put you all on notice about what could potentially be coming from their recommendations.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. That's a good clarification, and so it sounds like it's not something that you actually need guidance from us on, but rather, that sounds great. So I'd like to ask for a consensus that we support the change, changing instances of one-family, two-family, and multiple dwelling, in the code to single detached and duplex, and to revise the division, definition of multiple dwelling, to improve consistency across all of Chapter 26, and to modernize the code. If only we could modernize our charter to get rid of all the he's.
All in favor, raise your hands. Looks like we have consensus on that to move forward, so that's a yes. And then do we have consensus to postpone discussion really on what the Race and Equity Task Force is going to come up with?
Mayor, I do believe that Councilmember Beck had requested that we added another discussion item to revisit the non-owner-occupied. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a consensus to add an eighth discussion item under the ADU, specifically to talk about what?
Non-conforming owner-occupied, owner occupancy for non-conforming grandfathered in ADUs.
Alright, so consensus to discuss non-conforming, non-owner-occupied ADUs.
So, non-conforming owner-occupied ADUs? Non-conforming, non-owner-occupied properties that wanted to construct an ADU?
So I guess, the question is, could we grandfather in those existing non-conforming ADUs after they're brought into compliance, and not impose the owner occupancy on those that currently exist? So say we have a homeowner that comes forward, they have an existing ADU, and they go through the whole process, could they be exempt from the owner occupancy?
Are they currently homeowner, or are they currently occupants now?
They could be, or we could run into a situation where they are not. So say they have two dwelling units on one lot, they don't live in either of them, but it's a non-conforming ADU, do they have to move into the property to come into compliance, or can they exist as they currently are?
And this is a request then to put it on for discussion? Is that what we're talking about?
No. Yep.
Okay, let's see consensus about whether we want to add something for another discussion tonight, or at some other time. Is that tonight?
Tonight.
Yes.
Okay. How do the folks online voting? Okay, we've got one out of two. Counselor Hoppe.
I understand that what you're thinking is that there might already be someone who is an absent landlord, and has two, and one of them's, one of them is a non-conforming ADU, and one is their main house, and that they will try to come and get compliance for their ADU. Chances are, if they're an absent landlord, they probably aren't going to come to try to get their ADU into compliance. But I still think that it circumvents the whole issue around, that our community has around owner occupancy, and therefore I feel like we should still, that there should be no grandfathered-in, non-owner-occupied consideration.
Counselor Nosler Beck.
So if you do have people who are property owners, who have two separate dwelling units, and they are potentially renting them both out, and so they're not living on the property, then what is their pathway to still own that property and not, and get into compliance in Wheat Ridge? Like, what would they do if they have two separate units on their property, but they're not there? Or let's say, an example, a family has a property with two units on it, the family's renting it out, and, and I'm sorry, the parents are the owners of the property, the parents pass away or move away, and have their family member own it, and renting it out now with two units on it. What does that family member do to get into compliance, so that they are not, they are owner occupied? Do they have to move back into one of those units? That's what, at the root of what I'm trying to get at, is what are the options for paths forward then?
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I think with the intent of the ADU ordinance, in which we're trying to provide as much, you know, leeway to bring our existing ADUs into compliance, and while still really respecting that, our community is asked to be mindful of, you know, new investments in our community, I would support for our existing non-compliant ADUs, that if they can prove that it has been a rental property prior to adoption of the ordinance, that they would be exempted, but they have to, they have to demonstrate that both properties have been rentals, and that it would just, so it's just for the non-compliant, compliance, they have to demonstrate that it has a history of both properties being a rental unit, and that they wouldn't be able to at a later date convert, just because they're pre-existing prior to 2022. So new ADUs would have to be owner occupied, but in the spirit of bringing our existing ADUs out into the open compliance in safe habitable places, they have a pre-existing history of land use like this that wouldn't be changing, and so I would support that.
Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with what Ms. Hulteen just said. I would add one thing to it, though, that once that property is sold, that it goes back to our regular rules. So if they live there now, or they own the property now, and they're renting them both out, if they go to sell that property, then it should have to be owner occupied again, right? So it kind of goes back to our new rules. Does that seem fair, or is that something we can do?
Yeah.
But I don't. Are we talking about legally non-conforming existing ADUs, or are we talking about unsanctioned ADUs?
Legally non-conforming ADUs, correct? And unsanctioned?
Currently.
Well, I think we're talking about them becoming legal, right? So they have that process of the two-year grace period to somehow become legal, but like Ms. Nosler Beck is saying, they may become a legal dwelling unit, but neither of the property owner, or the property owner doesn't live in either of those houses. I think, I think we should grandfather that in, for now, but once they sell it.
Again, my question is, are they legally non-conforming, which is example three, which means that they've existed historically, and we acknowledge that they're legal, even though they don't conform with the zoning code or potentially the building code? Or are they these people going through this process to bring unsanctioned ADUs into compliance?
I think it's, I think it's both. But the example that I'm using in this is legally non-conforming, like, but I think it's both.
I move that it's both, because the second example, the complicated one, I mean, they're, we're using that example assuming that they're working to become legally conforming by bringing it up to code per the inspection, and, I mean, is that, that's the intent of that fourth category, right?
Counselor Hoppe.
Yep, so I think that we want a path forward for all of those who, whether they're non-sanctioned or legally non-conforming, to try to come to a place to be conforming, legal. In that pathway, there may be units that are non-sanctioned or legally non-conforming that are both being rented and have had a history of being rented, and therefore, in this example, Councilwoman Nosler Beck brought up, and then the needle that Councilwoman Hulteen threaded, was that if they can prove, by the time the ordinance was approved, if they can prove that those properties have been rentals the whole time, so in the case where the parents haven't been there forever, now they pass away, and the kids are like, well, now what, we have to move into this property? So in that case, if they can prove that they have been rentals, by the time the ordinance, at the time that the ordinance was enacted, then there is an exemption where they don't have to owner occupy. However, when that property sells, the next people who purchase it has the owner occupy trigger. Clarifying?
Okay.
So the path forward that we have for both legally non-conforming and front sanction requires that at the end of that process, they execute the covenant that says one of the units has to be owner occupied, and one has, and they can't be sold separately. So that would put off that process, or, you know, we could work with Doll's office in terms of, you know, how would we catch that when it next sells, to make sure we get that covenant in place? And Scott has a thought.
Yeah, I would add, like, we don't know when properties sell, so we would have no way of, unless the owner was just a really kind person, and came to us and asked for us to then do that covenant for the new buyer, I mean, we would never know. Because properties change hands all the time.
There's probably some investor in Arizona.
You know, there might be a path, and I'll just suggest this off the cuff, but, you know, that we could do what the examples suggest, which is record the covenant as part of the kind of legalization process for both of these categories, and then administratively provide some sort of exception to allow them to occupy the property. And then, when and if we become available, that they sold it, and if they're not occupying it in compliance with the covenant, that's when we would have an enforcement opportunity.
Counselor Hulteen.
Alright, everyone get your microphones on. I'm gonna ask for a consensus, and I'm gonna...
Wait a minute, before you do that, I see Counselor Ohm with his hand, and Counselor Dozeman had her hand up. So I'll go to Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. So if this gets grandfathered in, do they, do they then bypass all life safety issues? You know, so if the ADU's in a basement or something, and it's like, well, you don't need to have egress, or you don't need electrical, does this, does that, is that what this is saying, that we just bypass all of that, all those issues?
No, the only thing it would bypass would be the initial owner occupancy requirement for that person. They would still have to follow all the steps in that Example Four of getting into compliance, whatever way that is.
Okay, and this doesn't, from a legal aspect, it doesn't create any type of nexus with any other type of building issues where something is not legal, and they kind of ask for forgiveness, and... and they go back to something like this and say, "Well, you've already set a precedent." Okay.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So I think in theory, this is a great idea, but in reality, I'm not sure that it would work very well, and it seems like enforcement is not easily come upon. But I think the conversation that we've had tonight and at our last study session just goes to show, like, how complex this issue really is, and the fact that we are tackling it at, what time is it now? Oh, it's 10 o'clock at night. I'm not sure if we want to open this up for discussion another time, or if we want to just kind of move forward with it and then give an administrative. I like that proposal. Thank you.
Counselor Hulteen.
So I actually, I think we, I think we did thread the needle. I think the administrative aspect to this does accomplish that. So I'd like to go ahead and ask for a consensus that we, and I'm going to need a lot of help here, that, I'm 20 minutes past pumpkin, that we seek an exemption for the owner occupancy for the existing noncompliant ADUs in the, I'm sorry, I'm going to get the, in the unsanctioned, legally nonconforming ADUs, that would be an administrative action. And what else am I, oh, and then, and then they would need to prove that there is a history of renting both units prior to the adoption of the ordinance, and that that exemption would expire with the new owner, if that's something that could be seen. Did I get all the elements of that? Expire upon sale. Thank you.
So let's see a show of hands for that.
Can I just ask a clarifying point?
Yes, please.
Which is, I would suggest that when we go to draft this in the ordinance, that we, that we would say, that they would have to substantiate the renter occupancy status at the time of adoption of the ordinance. I wouldn't want during that two-year compliance window for someone to come in and start renting it to claim this right.
Yeah, it has to be prior to the adoption of the ordinance. Exactly. All right, did we have consensus?
We had consensus on that.
Oh, Ms. Hutchinson has something.
Yeah, thanks. Well, one way that they can show if it was a rental is by income tax returns. They're not just going to take, you know, they have to file income tax, you know? It's rental. That's pretty simple.
Okay. Mr. Cutler, good job. Any other, any other questions here for our council?
Nothing for us. I think we have pretty good direction at this point to finalize an ordinance. I don't know if we need to come back to another study session, unless you think we need to.
I think we're ready for first readings.
Yeah, let's do it. Next week.
Yeah, I was going to say, next Monday, we look forward to that. I just want to thank you guys. This was incredibly challenging, really, really thorough, excellent work.
Okay, that concludes. All right, that concludes item two on our agenda items. Mr. Goff has asked that we postpone discussion of item number three. Is there objection? No objection? Okay.
I hope not, because our presenter left.
And we will go then to staff reports.
Just real quick, it's late. A topic has been brought up about National Night Out. It's August 2nd of this year, and if you, I think most of you maybe have attended, we, in the past several years, we've held a one event in the city out here at Hayward Park, and we've been increasing attendance, which is great. We have a lot of fun activities and such. You know, the original intent of National Night Out was to have these in neighborhoods to promote safety and awareness, and there's been a suggestion that we look at doing that this year and maybe have four events, one in each council district, at a park or something. And Police Department is okay with it, but we just wanted to make sure you are all okay with it. It would probably require some of your help. We probably wouldn't be able to have all the fun activities that we do at this park. We can't have those at all in four locations, but I'm sure we could come up with, we could come up with different activities, and, and so we just want to get some thought or direction. Ms. Hulteen is actually the one that brought this up, so if you want to add anything to that.
I don't really have much to add to it. I just really like the idea of bringing it more to the neighborhood level, and, and I would encourage councilors to get creative, you know, work, you know, it'd be great to have police presence.
Yeah, we definitely have police presence at each park, at each, each district, and again, we couldn't have as many of the activities that we do here at one park, so it's going to be a little different. Maybe it's a barbecue instead of a, it's more neighborly.
Yeah, do potluck. So anyway, just, I think it's fun. I think we could have fun with it, and I think it's a great, we don't really have any kind of district-level tradition in the city, and I think it's a great way of initiating that, so.
So if everybody's comfortable with that, we can, I can let the PD to know to start planning for that instead of one single event. What does everybody think?
Okay, it looks like we have consensus for that.
Okay, all right. That's it.
Okay. We'll go to elected officials matters. Counselor Hoppe.
You forgot. Would you like to do it? I'd like to say congratulations to you.
Oh, I was going to do it next week, but you can do it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Ally Scheck, city, Assistant City Manager of the Year this weekend. So, yay!
CCCMA, yep.
Big enough deal that it can be both weeks.
Thank you, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. I have a few items this evening. First and foremost, I want to send my thoughts out to Officer Alan Fisher and his family, and I want to thank him for his bravery and his service. I was able to visit him in the hospital, and I saw a steady stream of Wheat Ridge Police Officers, as well as other officers in the surrounding communities, come and support Officer Fisher, and I just really love our Police Department and the hard work and their dedication and demeanor in this community, and I think that I am, I am very grateful personally to Chief Murtha and to our, our department for really bringing forth the relationship-based policing. I think it's done an amazing job in our community, and I think it really shines through. And then I also had a couple of ribbon cuttings this week on my calendar, so the first one, let me pull it up, sorry. The first one is the 21st, from 5:30 to 6:00, or the ribbon cutting itself is at 5:30. So Mayor Starker will be participating in a ribbon cutting event for American Liberty Mortgage at 5:30 PM on Thursday for 21. And then the Cosmos at the Gold, Gold's Marketplace, they're having their ribbon cutting for their reopening on Friday, April 22nd at 10:30. So really excited to see businesses, new businesses in our community, and one that's been a staple in reopening, and really excited about Gold's Marketplace. I've been telling all of the residents about it, and a lot of people have been asking questions, so the excitement and the buzz is out there.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick things. I just want to recognize the utter lack of plastic bottles here, so thank you for your continued commitment to plastic. Yeah, yeah, none of the single-use plastic. I really appreciate that. I want to thank the city. I purchased a tree on Saturday morning. I was in line at 9 o'clock, and I got the last Red Bud, I think, Roseberry something tree that I wanted, I like, and the guy behind me had wanted one. It was a little tense, but I got it, and we bought it as a memorial tree for, I know, he did, he scowled at me. But it was, I mean, it was special. It's a memorial tree for the dog that we lost recently, so it was really special to be able to go participate in that, and it was just really neat to see that we're Tree City USA, and it was flying colors on Saturday. I'm, I don't know if we have any trees left. I mean, it was amazing. And then I want to mention two things. The 35th Avenue Bike Lane survey is online, and I'd encourage anybody who uses 35th Avenue to walk, ride a bike, or drive their car, participate, to inform what's needed there to make that safe for everybody. And then on Wednesday night, the Wheat Ridge Police Department is hosting an open house at the, here, in this very room that we're in, and would encourage everyone to participate. Counselor Ohm and I hosted a District Two meeting on Saturday, and we were really honored to have both the chief and Commander Schminz, I think is how you pronounce his name, attend, and they were both really fantastic, just talking about the, the relationship policing that the city is doing, as well as some of the different efforts to be responsive to what they're hearing our community wants. So check with our Police Department, they do a fantastic job and are really committed to our city, so thank you.
I'll turn around and see if Mr. Clerk, do you have anything tonight?
I just wanted to thank the staff for the excellent tree setting. It was so good that I got there about 15 minutes after Counselor Hulteen bought the Red Bud tree I planted to buy for my wife for our wedding anniversary, and it's all Rachel's fault.
Oh, your lawn.
Okay, all right. I do have some other thoughts about the sale, because it was so highly successful. I just want to make comment, we ought to expand it next time. And the staff has already started writing a list of recommendations about how to improve, which I'm sure they'll pass on to the mayor. But it was, it was just delightful to see, just disappointing that somebody aced us out of the last rip.
All right. We hear you. Any other, any other matters come before our study session tonight? Ms. Weaver.
I just want to thank everybody for allowing me and Mr. Stites to be online tonight. I did want to remind everybody, you really need to be online some night, because everybody needs to lean into a microphone. If you're more than four inches away, you can't hear. So just a reminder to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you for reminding us that, because you really can't hear too well. All right. If there's no more business to come before our meeting, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you next week, 7 o'clock, right here.